Okay, I'll let them know.
And if we could get all non-council members to please turn off your video. Thank you.
And we're live.
Hey, welcome to special council meeting on Tuesday, March 23rd. It's gonna be a special session session on our Palo Alto rail grade crossings. Could the clerk please call the meeting to order?
Of course. Vice Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Mayor Du Bois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present.
Great, thank you. So again, we have a just one item tonight, which is a study session. So we'll go ahead and start with the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're gonna try to gear up the PowerPoint, which I think may stretch the limits of our PowerPoint capacity with graphics and size of files and all of all of that. So hopefully, this will go well. So let me see. If staff can get the PowerPoint up and running. Very good. All right, terrific. Here we are. Well, when taking on a topic as large as rail grade separations, I suspect, or we'll use the term connecting Palo Alto, which has been our project name now for several years, that I'm reminded of the old joke, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And so we will start that this evening and walk through some particulars and see how your discussion goes this evening. So let's start off with the first few slides. Next slide, please. Okay, so in terms of format, we are proposing a sequence of the presentations that you will receive this evening to follow the basic outline here, which would be, we'll go through, I'll provide this introduction, then we'll provide via staff and our consultant team, the background and overview of the alternatives. Then we'll hand it off to the Chair and Vice Chair of our XCAP, the Expanded Community Advisory Panel, to present an overview of their work and their conclusions. And then we'd suggest going to public comments and then do a round of council members' questions and comments. And again, this is formatted as a, as a really an overview of, again, what is really a very detailed topic, but one that in order to perhaps provide both context and to to bring everyone along in the conversation would best be served by this approach. And then come back to more detailed review of issues and findings around the individual intersections that were studied in great detail, including Churchill, Meadow and Charleston, and coming back to next steps. Now, you may find that we can't accomplish this entire overview tonight, in which case we have tentatively set aside date and late, late next month to continue. But then perhaps based on how the discussion is going this evening, the council will want to provide us some feedback on how you would like to proceed with both dive into the information on the work that has been done, as well as identifying some of the next steps that you'd like to take on. So with that, let me charge forward and we'll go through this background and overview and then we can see how the council would like to proceed. First, I won't go through this in detail, but just really to emphasize the point that this conversation has been one in Palo Alto for many years, more than 10 years, really, if you include dates back to when the high-speed rail discussion really became substantive based upon California voters' approval of Prop 1B and has continued through a variety of steps driven largely by major milestones in the work ongoing between High-Speed Rail and Caltrain with respect to alignments and electrification. Next slide, please. Then moving into 2014, really issues here in Palo Alto, and quite frankly, this predates my tenure here in Palo Alto, included evaluation of the trenching alternative and looking very closely at costs and implications of trenching throughout the city. And that extended for a few years into 2018 when evaluation had identified a entire set, 34 alternatives, depending on how you count them, and the establishment of more detailed technical analysis of those various crossings. Next slide, please. And then really, oops, okay, they're really focusing, even though there are three blocks here, really focusing over the last two years from the scoping of the three crossings, Churchill, Meadow and Charleston, and looking very closely at a series of alternatives involving each one of those existing intersections. The involvement of the XCAP, again, the Expanded Community Advisory Panel, but we'll get used to calling it the XCAP this evening, and then their significant work and then leading to where we are this evening. Now, before we move on, let me just be the first of what I suspect will be many accolades to the work of the XCAP and appreciation for the extraordinary time and effort and brainpower that they've put into this significant challenge. But so we'll describe that in more detail in a few minutes. Next slide, please. Okay, so I got the task of trying to explain this graph, which is no small task in and of itself. So let me just describe this as the general design and approval process, which is typical for any major capital project, such as whether it's a grade separation, or it could be a rail line itself, or a variety of highway or other major infrastructure projects. And so along the horizontal axis here, we've got the major steps everywhere from identifying the project need to securing programming, which is the bureaucrat's way of talking about funding, to get some funding to move into next steps. Then a series of steps that are defined typically by the the major agencies, including Caltrain, Caltrans, for projects that are under their jurisdiction, the Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration. So this is a common sequence of the major phases of projects leading up to construction. And again, just to walk through it quickly, it includes preparing a project report and environmental studies of a specific project concept that is being evaluated, then securing the approval by the responsible agencies, in this case, Caltrain, that is the owner of the railway, as well as potentially other agencies that would need to approve it, such as possibly, well, certainly VTA is a funding agency and Santa Clara Valley Water District or Valley Water, to the extent that there were issues of their jurisdiction and other agencies as well. Then completing design, a final bid package, as it's called, of detailed designs and specifications, plans and specifications that would then be used to select a construction company to build a project, and then you move into construction. The blocks up above with the "we are here" arrow indicating that we are, hopefully, we've identified the project need and are now moving into the the work of selecting the alternative or alternatives that will then allow the city to seek funding from other agencies. We will talk more specifically about that, but again, in many cases, in most cases, quite frankly, the significant funding for detailed design and construction really would not be secured or committed from any other agency until there is a preferred alternative that is used for the, for the purpose of then going through the the engineering work and the approval and the reviews that will follow. And then, as you see here, under prelim engineering or preliminary engineering, a series of technical studies that are involved here, rail operations, freight issues, safety and security for the rail line, structural designs for the the infrastructure itself, hydraulics as it relates to the handling of water, geotechnical studies, soils conditions, and constructability on the methods of construction and the like. So I walked through that, along with the traffic work, as examples of the kinds of technical studies that are to come, with the key being the curve. This curve, blue curve you see starting down relatively flat and then sloping up, and this is a curve of expenditures, where we have spent significant funds to get to this point, but the point, the steps going forward and the engineering work involved with any or all of the alternatives that continue for further evaluation really do increase by an order of magnitude, potentially the funds required in order to take next steps. And the key other note for this graph being that formal approval of the projects themselves to be constructed will typically happen quite a bit later in the process. So while we have done significant studies for our own decision-making and the council may choose to undertake additional technical studies in order to increase our own confidence as to the alternatives and the methods of construction that are preferable from the city and community's perspective, that these responsible agencies typically have approval authority and approval steps that would not be finalized until much later in the process. So in any case, with that, let's keep moving. Next slide, please. And just note, perhaps in a way of setting some general parameters for your discussion tonight and in the next steps to identify some areas that you may consider. Certainly, the council will have your own thoughts as to where to focus activities, but areas such as reviewing the details of these alternatives, which we will get into tonight. There may be interest in inviting regional partners such as Caltrain and VTA to come and talk to the City Council about where they are on the topics of discussion and issues that may be key decision points for the city. That the third, that the council may consider narrowing the number of alternatives or eliminating some that have been evaluated in depth to this point, simply for the purpose of simplifying the next steps and and the range of discussions on next steps. Fourth, that you may direct staff to conduct additional studies on selected alternatives, simply to, again, get more information for which to take next steps. And then finally, the the formal next step in the typical project development process would be to complete what's called a project study report, which would encapsulate the work done to this point for review by those agencies that have responsibility for approval. Next slide, please. All right, with that, let me turn this over to our Chief Transportation Official, Mr. Cam.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening. I'm Philip Cami, Chief Transportation Official, and I first want to echo the City Manager's commendation of the members of the XCAP that have really volunteered countless hours of time, including, I believe, 48 XCAP meetings, and that, of course, doesn't even count all the time they spent working outside of those meetings. So this slide just gives us context. Palo Alto, we have seven total grade crossings, of which three of them are currently grade-separated, but four of them have at-grade crossings. Next slide. The four crossings that are, that are at-grade are significant because Caltrain electrification is going to increase the frequency of the trains and will account for gates being down for approximately 15% of the peak hour time. And so that will extend the queuing and the impacted intersections will have impacts on all nodes. Next slide. This is a short summary of some of the work and community outreach that has occurred since this project started. These meetings and stakeholder input have helped move along the process of eliminating alternatives from consideration. I I think we had close to 40 alternatives that were originally considered and also have helped us to develop new alternatives along the way. And next, I'm going to be handing the presentation off to our consultants, AECOM and Hexagon, who will provide an overview of the alternatives that the XCAP have been considering.
Thank you, Philip. Yes, I'm Milet Litzinger from AECOM, and good evening. I'm gonna walk, Peter DiStefano and I are going to briefly present some of the alternatives that are under consideration, starting with Churchill. And at Churchill, there are three alternatives under consideration, and that is the closure with mitigations, a viaduct and a partial underpass. And Peter is gonna start the presentation with going through the closure alternative and its two options.
I seem to be stuck on this slide here. I don't know what happened. Hold on one second. No, it's not changing.
You getting some delay on the video?
Oh, that's not what's happening. One second. What slide do you see? Because I'm, my, one of my screens is frozen.
Yeah, I'm seeing the Churchill closure mitigation, option one layout.
Okay, well, I'm gonna have to work blind a little bit here. But anyway, let me orient everybody here.
If you want, Peter, I can start if you need to reboot, or?
No, no, that, that, I think, I think I'm fine, because one of my screens is locked, but I think my other screen is seeing what you're seeing. So I think we're good.
Okay, awesome.
My name is Peter DiStefano. I'm a civil engineer with AECOM. So before I dive into the details of these, let me orient everybody here with the colors. You're gonna see a lot of purple on these exhibits coming up. So those are meant to show the roadway, limits of the roadway modifications. Typically, that's meant to represent how much we're lowering the road. In this case, here at Churchill, we're not doing any lowering of the roads. It's just meant to show like a limits of resurfacing and restriping of the of the new T-intersection that we'll have here at Churchill and Alma when we close the at-grade crossing. The yellow shaded areas represent the ramps descending down into the tunnel. The brown represents the tunnel itself, as you can see there under, across or under the tracks in this case. And the blue areas represent sidewalk areas or improvements, and then the green represents existing paved areas that could be converted to landscape areas. And in this option here, the the ramps, the, they run parallel to the tracks. They descend down into about a 45-foot-long tunnel and then ascend back up on the other side of the tracks. This configuration is actually very similar to the layout at the, at Mayfield, I think it's Mayfield Avenue in Mountain View at the San Antonio Station. Okay, this is a render, a couple of renderings of this option. This this view on the left is looking north down Alma. You see the Pali Football Field on the upper left. The T-inter, the new T-intersection with Churchill and Alma on the right. This is kind of gives you a good view, looking down into the ramps as it descends down into the tunnel on each side of the tracks. The view on the right is looking from the opposite direction, so from the bleachers at the high school. And you can kind of see on the middle right, you can see the entrance to that tunnel with the stairs descending down into it. This configuration is meant to preserve the existing Embarcadero bike path, so you can also see that there in the view on the lower right. Okay, for option two, this is a bit of a different configuration where we have the tunnel that goes underneath, not only the tracks, but underneath Alma Street as well. So beginning at the left, the ramp begins its descent just west of Mariposa. It goes into about 130-foot-long tunnel, again, that goes under the tracks under Alma, and then begins its ascent to just, just east of the intersection, and then daylights at that crosswalk, they could see there on the right, within the center of Churchill. Let me take a, let's take a look at a couple of renderings of this option. This view on the left is looking east from Castelaya, Pali, or actually from Mariposa, I should say, and it's looking east towards the Churchill-Alma intersection. You can see in the middle of the screen there, the portal or the tunnel entrance. And in this configuration, we show stairs coming from each side of the, of the tunnel. It's multiple variations, and this could be done, and this is just one example. And then the view on the, on the right is is a view from the opposite side of Alma, that's looking, looking west towards El Camino. You could see the, the pedestrian path down the center of Churchill, and it begins its descent, and then you zoom in or look a little closer, you kind of see the entrance to the tunnel as it goes underneath Alma Street. Okay, with that, I will hand it over to Gary from Hexagon.
Yes, thank you. So Hexagon, we are transportation consultants, traffic engineers, and we were on the team to analyze these, these alternatives. And the, the primary question at Churchill is, if Churchill were to be closed, then what would happen to the traffic that is currently using Churchill on the over, on the underpass or the at-grade crossing? And where would that traffic go? And what sort of impact would that have? And could that be accommodated on the alternative crossings that they, that it would use? So there is a complete traffic study about this. I'm just gonna talk about some of the, some of the improvements that were identified to accommodate the traffic. So some of that traffic would be, we say diverted, we use the word diverted, to Embarcadero, where there's currently an under, underpass. And some of that traffic would be diverted to Oregon Expressway slash Page Mill, where there's another underpass there. And our study found that there are really two issues with accommodating traffic on Embarcadero. One is that Embarcadero is already a very busy corridor and and would need some attention in order to accommodate this traffic. And the other thing is that, as I'm sure you're all aware, what what we call the connection or the interchange between Alma and Embarcadero is incomplete. And it, and in order to make all the connections and all the movements between those two streets, and right now, it's necessary to use some residential streets like Lincoln and Emerson. And so we didn't want to increase the traffic on those local residential streets. And so this concept revises this interchange to create a new signal, signal at Kingsley and allow the movements to occur there instead of using the neighborhood streets. And in order to accommodate, to make everything work, it would also be necessary to widen the Alma Street where it goes over Embarcadero. So this shows a little bit of widening there of that bridge. Also, as an option to, you could eliminate one of the signals that's on Embarcadero, where at the crosswalk by the high school. And and so this shows in orange, you know, a potential new bridge that would go across for for bicycles and pedestrians, and then that signal could be eliminated. There are some other improvements, if we get out the next slide, that would be necessary to accommodate the diverted traffic. This shows just a schematic of adding a turn lane on Embarcadero where it approaches El Camino. So that would also be part of the improvement package to accommodate the the diverted traffic. Next slide. There, there we go. Also, some improvements on Oregon Expressway slash Page Mill at El Camino. This shows an added right turn lane there to accommodate the traffic that would be diverted to Page Mill and Oregon Expressway. And then next slide. So this is the last set of improvements necessary for that Churchill closure, which would be to signalize the ramp connections from Oregon Expressway to Alma that right now are are not signalized. So I'll turn it back to the design team.
Thanks, Gary. I'm gonna start walking through the next Churchill alternative. You just heard about the Churchill closure, and this is the Churchill Viaduct. And it's a plan and profile of what the railroad would look like. I'm using this to illustrate the extents of the rail improvements for the alternatives. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to visit our website and virtual room and see some of these exhibits in more detail, so you can zoom in and see things as needed. But in this exhibit and a few others that you'll see, the railroad is, the railroad tracks are from left to right on this exhibit. San Francisco is to the left or north, and San Jose is to the right, which is south. And then in the, and on the top half of the sheet, this is our plan view, which is looking down on the rail corridor from above. And the bottom half of the sheet is the rail profile. So you're looking at the railroad tracks from the side when you're standing on the Palo Alto High School side of the tracks. And so for this alternative, the railroad tracks will be elevated on a structure over Churchill Avenue, and it's called a viaduct. The railroad will begin rising near Homer Avenue, go over Churchill and return to the existing track elevation near Cal, the California Avenue Station. Oops. Went too far. Then this is a rendering of what the viaduct would look out like. The the viewpoint is looking to the south. Churchill would remain at its existing grade and its existing lane configuration, essentially. And the railroad would be approximately 20 feet above Churchill. This is the most expensive of the Churchill alternatives. The closure alternative that Peter and Gary just presented is the least expensive of the Churchill alternatives. And I think I'm gonna pass it off to Peter to do our third and final alternative for Churchill.
Milet, are you controlling the the slides now?
I am. Yes. I'm mission control here.
Oh, guys, that's funny. I thought I had control. No worries. Okay, thanks, Milet. Um, so in this slide, there's a slight change to this color scheme that we used before. This, this exhibit was developed a little bit later in the process, so instead of the sidewalks being shown in blue, you see them here in this deep pink color. Anyway, in this, in this alternative, this is the partial underpass at Churchill. The tracks remain where they are today at their existing elevation. And Churchill is lowered from just east of Castelaya. So at the bottom of your screen, we see the purple begin, and it begins its descent, and it goes underneath the tracks, and it meets Alma, a lowered Alma Street at a, at a new T-intersection that's about 20 feet below grade, existing grade where it is today. So from this T-intersection, let me guide everybody through the different turning movements. So if you're coming, let's say, from Castelaya, you go into the under, you go into, you approach that T-intersection, you're forced to either make a right or left, make a right to southbound Alma or left onto northbound Alma. The through movement is no longer available because of retaining wall. We'll see that in an upcoming slide here on a rendering. If you're coming from the north on southbound Alma, you're going to go down into a lowered Alma, and you can just continue straight and ascend back up towards Colbridge, or you can make a right turn and go underneath the tracks on the westbound Churchill. From northbound Alma, you're gonna have a decision, the drivers will have a decision to make at Colridge Avenue. You'll bear left if you want to make a left turn at Churchill, if you want to go towards Pali High or El Camino. And you're gonna want to bear right if you want to stay on, stay on northbound Alma, or if you want to make, let's say, a right-hand turn onto Churchill or Kellogg. The, there's a few turning movements that are restricted with this alternative. Left turns from into Alma Street are, you will not be able to be made at Kellogg, Churchill and Colbridge. And this, this alternative requires some minor partial acquisition of properties. No full acquisitions required for this one. And lastly, there's a 140-foot-long pedestrian, pedestrian tunnel that's located at Kellogg, on the, toward the left side of your screen there. That's very similar to the layout that we just saw previously for option two at Churchill. So let's take a look at a photo simulation. The photo on the left is just an existing Google Street View image. And the image on the right is a 3D model of the proposed project overlaid on that same photograph. It's actually the same photograph. It's, it's hard to believe, but it is. Obviously, what's what's most notable here is the removal of the trees on the left side of Alma, the removal of the utility poles, the trees and the landscape strip on the right side of Alma. Also on the, on the proposed project image on the right, you kind of see the elevation difference there between the, on the left where it's, where it's lowered about 20 feet and where on the right it's, it's of the existing grade. And then the next slide, we got a couple of renderings of the, of this alternative. The one on the left is looking towards Pali High, see the Pali High football field in the background. You could see that T, there's actually two T intersections back to back. There's a T intersection that's at grade at Alma and, and Churchill. And then there's another one that's again 20 feet lower that allows access underneath the tracks. And then the image on the right is the, um, the street view image at, at the lowered T intersection at Alma and Churchill.
Okay, I'm going to pick it up here and we're going to move on to the Meadow Charleston alternatives. There are six alternatives for Meadow and Charleston. A viaduct, a trench, hybrid, underpass, and there are two tunnel alternatives. On the website and virtual room, we refer to these tunnel alternatives as the South Palo Alto Tunnel. So this is the same plan profile view that, or same orientation that I used to just described at Churchill. And at this location, the railroad will be elevated over Meadow Drive and Charleston Road, similar to the Churchill. Similar to how Churchill was elevated, the railroad was elevated over Churchill. And the railroad would be gearing raising north of Loma Verde, remain elevated on a Meadow Drive and Charleston Road, and then return to the existing elevation south of Verney Avenue. And we have a rendering of this and what it could look like. This is a viewpoint looking to the south. Meadow would remain at its existing grade and the railroad would be approximately 20 feet above. So Meadow, it would be 20 feet above Meadow Avenue and it's similar at Charleston Road as well. The next alternative is the trench. The railroad will be lowered in a trench below Meadow Drive and Charleston Road. The lowering will begin south of Loma Verde. It'll remain under Meadow Drive and Charleston and return to grade at San Antonio Station. The railroad will be approximately 30 feet below its existing elevation. And lowering the railroad will require diversion of Adobe and Baron Creeks, which will result in the need for a lift station siphon and numerous regulatory agency permits and approvals, one of which Ed mentioned, which was Valley Water. This is a rendering of the trench. The, um, this is illustrating Meadow is a similar Charleston. It remains at its, its existing grade on a bridge that would go over the railroad tracks. The trench here would, uh, the retaining walls for the trench will require ground anchors. And that's why the landscaping modeled here depicts plants with shallow roots because we couldn't have deep rooted plants along with those ground anchors in the retaining wall areas. The next alternative is the hybrid. And hybrid is a term we use to indicate that the railroad is partially raised and the roadway is partially lowered. The railroad tracks for this will be approximately 15 feet above Meadow and Charleston. And the railroad will begin raising near El Verano Avenue. It'll remain raised over Meadow and Charleston and then return to the existing track elevation just north of Verney Avenue. This is a layout of Meadow Drive, similar to the layouts that Peter showed you. The purple area indicates areas where the roadway would be lowered. So generally the limits here, uh, Meadow Drive would be lowered between, you know, Park Boulevard and Alma Street. And Alma Street would also need to be lowered to meet up with Meadow Drive. Similar, this is a, the layout sheet for Charleston. The impacts here are very similar in that not only does Charleston need to be lowered, but Alma Street does as well. And for both Meadow and Charleston, we're talking about lowering it around six feet. This is a rendering of Charleston Road and it illustrates the retaining walls to elevate the railroad tracks and then also the retaining walls to lower Charleston as well as Alma Street. And I think we're going back to you, Peter.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks, Mellet. Okay, this is the alternative, the underpass alternative at Meadow. There's another one at Charleston that I'll explain here in a second. And this alternative is a little bit similar to Churchill in that the tracks will remain at their, at their current existing elevation. And Meadow will be lowered from approximately, or just west of Park Boulevard, I should say, to about Emerson. Again, if you see the limits of the purple, that gives you an indication of the amount of lowering we're doing for, for Meadow. So Meadow goes completely under the tracks and underneath Alma Street in this alternative. There are a few turning movements that will, that will not be able to be accommodated. For example, the, the vehicles on Meadow in both directions will not be able to access southbound Alma Street. Actually, before I talk about that real quick, in addition to this layout, it's important to note that there's a separated ped bike path, a 20-foot wide ped bike path that's shown on the south side of, of Meadow here. We'll see that here in a rendering here in a second. Getting back to the restricted turning movements, vehicles on northbound Alma will not be able to access, directly access Meadow. However, um, they, they can travel about 600 feet to the north past Meadow, make a U-turn at Alma Village Circle. And due to the proximity of the tracks and Alma Street itself, that turning radius is relatively tight. So it would only be for passenger vehicles, not trucks. You could see that on the, on the left side of that image there. And then lastly, on the south side of Meadow, Park Boulevard will no longer have a direct connection with, with Meadow. That's due to the, um, to the ped bike path being on the south side of Meadow. Uh, this alternative requires some partial acquisitions and two full, uh, two full property acquisitions. Uh, I'm sorry, one last thing I wanted to note here. To help improve ped bike connectivity, there are pedestrian bridges shown in the brown color on each side, over, over Meadow on each side of the railroad tracks. Let's go to the next slide, take a look at some renderings of this one. The one on the, on the left here is looking straight down Alma towards the north. You could see Meadow there right down the middle. In this, this view, you could see the ramps from connecting, for example, from Meadow, the, the ramp on the, on, on the left connects southbound Meadow to, I'm sorry, southbound Alma to either direction, there would be a new signalized intersection at the bottom of that ramp in the underpass. And that's, what's not shown here is that some of these runnings were, were conceived before some of these iterations took place. So that, for example, the U-turn at Alma Village Circle is not shown on the rendering. But, um, just, just beyond, but like I said, about 600 feet north of Meadow, there's, there's the ability for cars to make a U-turn and then descend down that ramp. And then on the right side, you could see the, uh, north, the access to northbound Alma with the ramp that ascends up, up onto Alma. And then the image on the right here is looking west on Meadow. You could see the, um, that gray, the separated ped bike path there on the left. Again, that also goes underneath Alma completely and the tracks. So there's no pedestrian vehicle conflicts. And then on the right, you can see that direct access, that ramp that's just around the corner, that retaining wall that accesses, uh, northbound Alma Street from, from both directions on Meadow. Okay, that's it for Meadow. I know there's a lot to absorb there. So I, I imagine you're going to have questions later, but I'm just trying to highlight the, the key points for these. So this alternative here at Charleston is, has a lot of similarities to the one at Meadow. The tracks will remain at their existing elevation. And Charleston will be lowered to go underneath the tracks and underneath Alma Street. It begins its descent just west of Park Boulevard and then conforms back to existing just west of Wright Place. Again, similar to Meadow, there'll be a separated 20-foot wide ped bike, shared use ped bike path on, this time on the north side of Charleston versus the south side of Meadow. And so there, there will be a handful of turning movements that, that will not be able to be accommodated. But, but it's, um, let me rephrase that. Some of the turning movements at the Alma Charleston intersection will have to be accommodated through the roundabout that you see towards, uh, on the upper part of the image there near Monford Place. So let me give you an example. Let's say you're traveling north down on Alma and you want to make a left towards El Camino onto Charleston. Well, that left turn is no longer available. So you would make a right turn at the intersection, traverse along the frontage road at grade towards the roundabout. Then you'd make a U-turn via the roundabout, come, come back in the other direction towards the west and then descend down underneath Alma and underneath the tracks. So that's how that left turn movement is accommodated. It's not direct, it's not a direct movement, but the movement itself is accommodated through the roundabout. You can see there on the left, um, I won't go through each of them, but there's, there's a few of these movements that have to be accommodated through the roundabout. This alternative requires some partial acquisitions and three full property acquisitions. And let's go to the next slide, take a look at some renderings. The view on the left looking south down Alma. The, the, uh, the light colored bridge is, is, or pavement is the bridge that, that stands over a lowered Charleston on Meadow on, I'm sorry, on Alma. And then, um, you could kind of see on the right side of Alma, between Alma and the tracks, there is a southbound or direct connector ramp from, that's from eastbound Charleston. So you can kind of see that in that view. And then the image on the right is a good view of the roundabout. See, I see the roundabout in the foreground. And then you can see the bridge underneath Alma and underneath the tracks in the background. I'm sure you all have a lot of questions there about these. Cause there's, there's a lot going on with these alternatives. Back to you, Mellet.
Yeah, so on to the last two Meadow Charleston alternatives, which are the, the tunnel alternatives. And the first one is with passenger and freight, which means that the, both the passenger train and the front freight trains would be in the tunnel. So in this case, the railroad would be lowered in a trench south of Oregon Expressway to approximately Loma Verde. And then, um, a twin bore tunnel would begin at the end of the trench and extend to the south, to just south of Charleston Road. The railroad tracks will then be raised in a trench to approximately Verney Avenue. So as you look at this profile, it, you descend in a trench section and then you get into the twin bore, then you come out in a trench section and then back to grade. The diameter of the twin bore tunnel is 34 feet and the railroad will be approximately 60 feet below its existing elevation. As with the trench alternatives that we discussed, you would have diversions of creeks and the, this would be Adobe and Matadara Creeks. And again, we'd need list stations, siphons and many regulatory agency permits and approvals. This is a rendering, um, an aerial view of what this alternative would look like. This is showing, um, the trench, um, section before you enter the, the twin bores. And similar to the trench in the, uh, the Meadow Charleston trench alternatives in this area where we have the trench, uh, section, we would have those ground acres, anchors supporting the retaining walls. And the other alternative, the other tunnel alternative for Meadow Charleston is similar in that the passenger trains would remain in the tunnel, but that the freight trains would remain at grade. And the profile is very similar to a previous alternative that I just described. However, the diameter of the tunnel is slightly smaller at 30 feet, since it does not need to accommodate freight. And the tunnel goes a bit deeper for this alternative. It's almost 70 feet below, um, its existing elevation. And also the same creek impacts that I identified for the previous alternative. And then here's a rendering, a street view at Charleston Road. Another differentiator of this alternative compared to the other tunnel alternative is that Alma Street would be permanently reduced to one lane in each direct direction from south of Oregon Expressway to Ventura Avenue and from Charleston Road to Verney Avenue. Um, and this is to accommodate, uh, transitioning the train from its current alignment into those trench sections. So, uh, the two alternative, two tunnel alternatives for Meadow and Charleston are the most expensive of the Meadow Charleston alternatives. And the hybrid alternative is the least expensive. And I think with that, we're going back to the city.
Thanks, Mellet. As the city manager discussed earlier, there are several different potential next steps that can be considered. And this is a list of some of those possibilities. But one example of this, um, and in fact, we, we know that, we believe, I should say, that Caltrain staff is listening to this meeting tonight. And perhaps we might want to invite them to come and speak at a future meeting. Next slide. And these are some of the additional elements that can be options for input and noting that many of these items do require some coordination with Caltrain. And staff has been coordinating with Caltrain staff and, uh, we intend on meeting with them, um, again, uh, in April. And with that, um, we're going to conclude this staff presentation and hand it over to the X cap and I believe Chair Nadia Nyak will be taking over. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to figure out how to share my screen, but not before I make sure I have the presentation set up correctly. Okay. Oh, it says somebody else is sharing their screen. I have to wait.
I think he should be clear now.
Okay. It says screen sharing has failed. Let me try one more time.
All right, let's see who's.
It's okay. I think, I, I think it was a user error on my end. I'll try one more time. And if I fail, there we go.
Perfect.
Great. Okay, so I know you're already drinking from the fire hose, so apologies in advance for what else is coming at you. So my name is Nadia Nyak. I am the chair of the Expanded Community Advisory Panel. And, uh, my vice chair is Larry Klein, who's on the call with me. Let me get to the next slide. This is, uh, the members of X cap and I know that they're all on this call. Wanted to give a shout out to Greg Braille and Phil Burton in Young Cho, Tony Carrasco, Keith Rektal, Dave Shen and Kerry Templeton. We worked very hard as a team for a long time to bring you this presentation and kind of go through all of the information that's been presented. And, um, I really wanted to thank them for all of their work. I also wanted to really thank staff as well for the amount of time that they spent with us as well as with AE Comm and all the various project managers. We have Mellet and Peter here, but there were many more that we spoke with and, um, as well as other members of the city who helped us. And I also wanted to make sure to thank the members of the community, both who stepped up with their new alternatives, some of which you see tonight, and also some of the volunteer retired engineers who helped us vet those alternatives early on. So we had a lot of help from everybody and this really has been a community effort. And I think it's, uh, it's important to, to, uh, make sure that everyone is recognized. So as we go through the presentation, uh, Larry is also here. He will not be shy about, uh, stopping me to tell you when we disagree with things. But for the most part, I will run through the presentation. And this part just tells you what was recapped by staff, which is that we had a lot of meetings. We had a little bit of a break because of COVID, but since COVID, we really have stayed laser focused. And honestly, I think we were able to achieve more than council probably would have been able to do if it had been only focusing on this because they also had to deal with COVID. So, uh, in some ways it, it sort of worked out. But you have a lot of volunteers who helped. So here's, uh, what I'm going to run through today. We're going to start off doing an overview of the external factors that are impacting this project and, uh, followed by the, an overview of X cap recommendations. You've already had AE Comm go through a lot of the technical detail. There is still more and we are going to save that for the second meeting, I think, because it will probably feel overwhelming by the time I'm done presenting to you. So, but, um, I just wanted to reassure everybody that we will go into more detail. The report is 170. The report is 171 pages, so we'll feed it to you how we can. So for a little bit of timeline, I just wanted to point out that XCAP really started in about October of 2019. We very quickly got into trying to figure out if there were any alternatives that we were missing, and the community rallied and sent us a few. By January, the City Council approved two of those alternatives to study that you heard about, the partial Churchill Partial Underpass, and then the underpass from Meadow and Charleston. And then COVID hit, and that was in about March. I did want to say that one sort of major, we started having meetings again in May. And one of the major things that happened is that we were informed that Caltrain took a policy decision, which we'll talk about in a little while, that sort of impacts Palo Alto's abilities to do some of these grade separations in the near term. And so I just wanted to kind of throw out for you that we were about three quarters of the way through our process when we got hit with that, and that sort of changed things a bit. Before we keep going, I do want to say that, you know, we got a lot of questions from the community about whether grade separations still matter, especially in light of the traffic having gone away. And XCAP really felt it was extremely important to continue to communicate to the community that this is a, a project that will last probably 100 years or more. It, it takes a long time to design these things. It is a messy process. It will take a long time, but these are really critical grade separations that you will need to be able to improve transit, improve local traffic, really have some safety and achieve other goals like reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and reducing noise pollution. And so these remain a very high priority. This is an important one. Larry, chime in if you feel I missed something. But the council's role at this phase and maybe in the short term will be to make some decisions. Perhaps what are your preferred alternatives, how you might work on funding? But eventually, Caltrain will approve final designs, and you will have to work with future funding partners. And so your role as council members will eventually change. It will eventually go from maybe being the deciders on what we want Palo Alto's alternatives to be, to really being the champions for the ultimate decision makers. And I wanted to point that out, because as you sort of think about what you're, what you're really looking at and what's within your wheelhouse, that is a significant thing to keep in mind. Okay, so external factors that are affecting this. The first one is that there was supposed to be a Caltrain corridor-wide grade separation study. As you know, there are 41 remaining grade separations between San Francisco and San Jose that need to be completed. And Caltrain secured $5 million in funding for the study. According to their website, it's delayed till early 2021. And I certainly don't have an update on that. I don't know if anyone from the city has heard. Otherwise, I saw Ed come on. Ed, do you have an update on a, on a date for that? No? Okay. And so we were hoping earlier in our process that this might be a vehicle and a wave through which the XCAP and the city might be able to talk with Caltrain about some of these things. It hasn't worked out that way. And so at a high level, what is important for the city is that we may have to push Caltrain on suppose some technical standards and some policy standards earlier than this, how long it might take this process to go forward. And it's not an unexpected thing. Caltrain has made it clear. But I just wanted to put that force to everybody for those who are anticipating that we might be able to participate and get some answers out of the Caltrain corridor-wide grade separation study. It, it may not come in that form, although we will, we can certainly always keep adding, because there's been a lot of work that's been completed. The next big factor that is, impacts the grade separations is the location of passing tracks that are needed. So Caltrain and High Speed Rail Authority have a relationship. In 2012, they formalized that relationship through a memorandum of understanding. And essentially, High Speed Rail is, has been saying that they don't need any passing tracks to overtake Caltrain, that Caltrain can sort of wait in the wings and High Speed Rail will just go on through at whatever schedule it chooses. Caltrain has said, no, these are our tracks, and by waiting in the wings, you mess up our schedule. So you actually do need to have passing tracks. And the location of those passing tracks hasn't been decided. It's sort of a, an ongoing issue between the two agencies. It's important to note that if there is a four-track system somewhere, that grade separations are required by law. And Caltrain's position has been that High Speed Rail must fund them. And I want to say that conceptually, Caltrain's business plan process has always shown the four tracks to be somewhere around, starting around Cal Ave and continuing into Mountain View. They need about a little over three miles of passing tracks, all contiguous, is what they told us the last time. In their February of 2020, Caltrain surprised everybody by taking the position of having a rail corridor use policy. And what changed is they decided to take a more conservative approach. And so now what they're saying is that they are, they know that a four-track segment is necessary, but because they haven't worked out the details with High Speed Rail, that their, their approach is that starting at the San Franciscato Creek, which of course is our border between Menlo Park and Palo Alto, they are assuming that four tracks might be necessary all the way through Palo Alto. It's not that it will be for the length of all of Palo Alto, but that they might be somewhere in there. And what it says is that if Palo Alto were to go forward with the design on any one of its grade separations, be it a viaduct, a hybrid, what have you, that the Palo Alto must show a design that does not preclude the possibility of four tracks. It, XCAP and Palo Alto, to date, have never studied any four-track alternatives. So if four tracks are needed, some kind of revised, whether it's XCAP-type study or some kind of community study is probably going to be needed to undertake the new designs, because we haven't done any of that work. And I would be remiss if I did not point out that there are many that question whether High Speed Rail will ever materialize and whether this is relevant. But just know that Caltrain does control the tracks, and ultimately, we have to be able to have our designs approved by Caltrain. So Palo Alto will need to resolve this four-track issue to be able to advance its designs. I should also point out that at Churchill, which is the narrowest spot along the right-of-way, the right-of-way is only 72 feet wide. And so there's a question whether it's a geometric possibility to have four tracks at Churchill Avenue. And so I, that's an important thing that may have to be a front-loaded conversation for the council with Caltrain. Another consideration for the city is Palo Alto Avenue, which is the great crossing that XCAP did not have its part of its process. I, I literally just put it in here to, because I knew that Philip would mention that there were seven crossings, and this is one of them. I did want to say that it is, of course, adjacent to El Palo Alto and this historic bridge. And one thing that came up in my researching for this presentation is that it turns out that Caltrain has decided to move forward with the replacement of that bridge, and its proximity to the Palo Alto Avenue crossing means that they are intertwined. So depending on what happens with the bridge replacement might actually dictate the design for Palo Alto Avenue. So again, XCAP did not look at this. I'm just updating you as part of the work that I did to do this presentation. But we did say in the XCAP report prior to even knowing this, that the city ought to really be involved with Caltrain and Menlo Park. And I think that that has just become a more pressing issue. Given the timing, you can see they've hired a consultant and they expect some preliminary designs to be ready by June of 2021. So faster than we thought. Okay, so now we'll move on to XCAP's ultimate recommendations. Larry, this is the part I'm going to hand over to you now.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Nope, they still won't let me be, host will not let me be shown on the screen. Okay. Oh, now I can start. Okay.
I've got the slide for you, so you can just show your, your great face.
Okay. Well, before we go any further, I need to, since Nadia listed all these, thank you. She left out one person, and that's Nadia. So let me say that she did an extraordinary job as the chair. And not just in running meetings, but Nadia is, we all participated in the writing of the report. Nadia did more of it. We all participated in the editing of the report, but Nadia is the only one, I think, who read the report and edited the entire report many times. And the appendix to the report is almost exclusively Nadia's work. So my advice to the City Council is that they should not let Nadia get away. They should find some other role for her, because she's really an addition to the, a real asset for the city.
Thanks, Larry.
The next thing I want to mention, which is not on any of the slides, is what's been in the newspapers today? That is that the Biden, that the Biden administration is planning for a mammoth infrastructure program. And just reading the very brief summaries that are in the newspapers today, I don't see any mention of grade separations. But the federal infrastructure program is a likely source for us to get the money that would be needed for any of the grade separations that you're, you've been hearing about and will be discussing. So I would urge the council to get on top of this one and direct the city's lobbyists to really work with our representative in Congress and our senators, see what can be done, that there be money in that infrastructure bill to provide for grade separations on the San Francisco Peninsula, including, of course, Palo Alto. And you're going to hear us come back to that idea over and over again, that the council's role here has to be more, much more than just a decision maker. It has to be to work with Caltrain, work with our neighboring communities, and I think work with the federal and state authorities as well to, to provide the financing for what is obviously a major, major infrastructure program. Just listen. Okay, meanwhile, back in on our recommendations. Churchill, you've seen it on the slides we had so far. The committee, I voted six to three with Nadia, Phil Burton, and Keith Rektal in the minority voting no. The let me stop here for a moment and from this slide and just point out, why did the majority get to where it did? Why is it recommending that Churchill be closed? Well, first is that it's the lowest cost option. The closure, even with the mitigations that have been recommended, would come in an estimate, an estimated cost of 50 to 65 million, whereas the partial underpasses is 160 to 200 million, and the viaduct at 300 to 400 million. Now, all these prices are, can be worked out, but we might be improved on, but very clear that the closure is way, way, way less expensive than its alternatives. And may very well thus be much more appealing to provide for people who are going to provide the funding, whether it's local funding, state funding, or federal funding. The, and even the cost that we have estimated right now for the closure may be somewhat of an exaggeration, because we think that many of the mitigations that have been proposed by the consultant and the additional consult, mitigations suggested by XCAP itself are things that the city ought to be doing anyway. So that, for example, to pick what, what is my favorite one is the traffic mess we have on Embarcadero between the shopping center and Paly. When I was on the council, I asked over and over again to, to our traffic engineers, what can we do to fix it? And I was assured on several different occasions that all we had to do was tinker with the traffic lights and the, the and the jams that occur there would go away. Well, that has proved not to be the case. And the, one of the alternatives, mitigations proposed here by the traffic engineer, I think would have the impact of the one that we've been looking for there. And that is to add a additional lane on Embarcadero on the Paly High side of the street, which would enable the turns at Churchill, excuse me, at Embarcadero and El Camino to be handled much more successfully. The other reasons after cost are aesthetic appeal. The closure obviously would not require any large structures, whereas the viaduct is a very large structure, and the partial underpass, a lot is large, certainly would have a construction impact on the viewscape in that area. Thirdly, we think safety would clearly be improved because of the construction of the bike underpass as one of the mitigations to the closure. And here is a good point for us to mention that that there were, as the consultant has described, there would be two alternatives to creation of a bike underpass and the one that the committee felt by a vote of seven to two, with the two being abstentions by Phil Burton and Tony Carrasco, that we'd have a very safe underpass that would go under both Alma and the railroad tracks and have a flatter, wider, taller, fully lit bike tunnel with increased sightlines that would really be improvement to our biking community and our pedestrian community, getting from, from the, what we generally refer to as the east side of of Alma and El Camino, of Alma and the railroad tracks to the west side. I won't list all the mitigations that appear on the slide. There, we'll go into those in more detail when we get to the, that part of our discussion. But I would highlight just a few of them that one that we, I, I think is an area of frustration is that working with Town and Country really has not come to pass. We have asked several times for them to engage with us, and I think we are going to need their cooperation, and I hope that will come to pass as we move into further studies as to what's going to occur in that area. Let's move to the next slide, who has control over it? Do you have it? Okay. Let me go back to one other thing I want to mention on closing of Churchill. Closing of Churchill has another advantage. It's a lower level one, but it is at least in the realm of possibility that if you chose that in 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, you wanted to reopen it, that's possible. The people who voted no on the closure say that that's politically impossible, because safety officials don't like that. But it's a, that's a political problem that can be overcome. Whereas if you had built a viaduct and or all the work that would go into the partial underpass, that is not vetally reversible, because you'd have to spend a lot of money to take all that out and build whatever else you wanted to do. But now let me move to the next slide and talk to the impact of Churchill on the rest of sort of what we'll call the north of Palo Alto. That is, first, we, the committee feels that we the city needs to address the Palo Alto Avenue issue. What is the, what are we going to do about that crossing? Nadia has addressed that. The city has long planned to have a downtown coordinated area plan, which would address that, but that has been delayed for a variety of reasons and is not presently underway at all. Whereas the rest of the world has moved forward, and the possible construction of a new bridge there means that this is one that can no longer wait, that we have to start really engaging with the other agencies, Menlo Park and Caltrain, to see what we can do, what we want done there. Because whatever is done on that new bridge may very well affect what else we can possibly do at Palo Alto Avenue. And, and these things have a ripple effect. What you do at Palo Alto Avenue does, we think, have some effect ultimately on what we do at Churchill, for example. Lastly, we want to mention the Embarcadero grade separation. And I probably anybody who's ever moved to Palo Alto says, how in the world did we ever get just a three-lane road under there? And I don't know the answer to that, because that was decided on back in the 1930s when none of us were around. But eventually, it will have to be replaced. And we'll need to take a look and probably earlier rather than later as to what we, what we do when we replaced it and how that would affect everything else on the turning, turning movements in that area. So let me stop at that particular point and say to the council, in addition to your in addition to your other responsibilities with this, you have to take a, in my view, a very long-term view. As Ed Chikat has pointed out, that this is going to go on for probably the rest of this decade. And that we wrote our report with that in mind, that the information we're providing, we hope, will help not just the present council, but people who succeed you in '22, '24, '26, and so forth, because there are going to be decisions that have to be made or at least lobbied for all the way up and down that line. And let me conclude by, at that point, and turn it back to Nadia.
Great, thanks, Larry. So I think from here, we can move on to our recommendations for South Palo Alto. And as we mentioned in our, in our, the second meeting that we will have on this stuff, we will go into more details about the exact technical recommendations that we have for the, for additional mitigations on the closure of Churchill. So if anyone who's following along and knows that XCAP made recommendations, we will cover those, probably not at this meeting. So on South Palo Alto, we did have a unanimous decision, and that actually occurred early in our process, which was that XCAP unanimously recommended that the South Palo Alto tunnels be removed for consideration. We removed the two options because of cost, time to construct, and environmental impacts. It was just a lot, and, and, you know, we understand that there's limited funds. And so the committee felt, sorry, changed the slide there, was unanimous in their decision or in the recommendation there. With the remaining alternatives, XCAP could not come to a consensus recommendation. We couldn't even come to a majority recommendation with the information that was available. And it's not because we didn't try. We really, I think, one thing that we've learned and we sort of knew at the outset, which is sort of why XCAP was formed, but there are no super sexy alternatives that people are super excited about. Nobody has the one alternative that they know will work financially and is going to work from an engineering standpoint and will leave everybody very happy. Everything is very complicated, and when we get to the pros and cons of each in our next presentation, you will appreciate that. So instead, XCAP decided that they would give the council as much help as they could to help them think about what they can do in the near term. And so we have recommendations on areas of policy work and outreach. We have recommended additional technical interim work that can be done to help select an eventual preferred alternative. And we've made detailed suggestions on improving each alternative in the report. Most, the one that we were all united in is that the underpass alternative for Meadow and Charleston really needs to go through further iteration. It did have some review, but it was limited because it came after COVID, and it was a time when we had sort of run out of money on our contract, and we put up, there was certainly enough pictures and stuff drawn, but everybody admits that it's not where it should be relative to the other alternatives. And to be fair, the other alternatives had at least two years of being showed at public meetings and getting feedback from the public, and we just didn't get to do that with the underpass alternative. So I'm going to go in a little bit onto the policy work because as policymakers, this part should, should help you sort of set the table for your upcoming conversation. The criteria that XCAP used, which was the foundation for what's called, we call, referred to as the matrix. So in the, in Appendix A of the report, there is a matrix that has all the alternatives comparative with each other based on these criterias and adding criteria that AECom came up with, which are more technical in nature. But those criteria were developed in September of 2017, and they were never updated as we got more alternatives becoming more real and becoming the sort of direction. And I guess specifically, I think closure wasn't really as heavily considered when we were looking at these alternatives. So there are some existing conflicts that exist between the criteria that we were given and some other guiding policy documents that we tried to review. And so obviously, one area of existing, or one area of future work that we are proposing is that in order to help you narrow the range, you should definitely look at that criteria. The documents that we recommend looking at, because there are some things that conflict, is certainly the comprehensive plan. We also take a look at the 2012 Bike and Pedestrian Transportation Plan, which I know is, for those who don't know in the public, it's typically updated every 10 years. So it would be due for an update next year. And I know that because there are a lot of bike and pedestrian rail considerations, particularly for the closure with mitigations of Churchill, that this is going to be integral to understanding how we move bikes and pedestrians across the rail corridor. There were recommendations made in the rail corridor study in 2012 also that could help inform some of the council's criteria. Another area that XCAP focused on was trying to formalize a system for feedback. We originally had, most specifically, I'm thinking of the Palo Alto Unified School District. Early on in XCAP's meetings, we had someone who had been appointed by the school district on our committee. But when it became clear that we were going to be making recommendations to council, the school district pulled that person because they were felt conflicted. Were they supposed to respond on behalf of what was good for the school district's properties? Or were they supposed to recommend what was good for Palo Alto Unified's students and families? And what happens if there's a tension between those two? So what we also came to realize on XCAP is that, much like the city council, has, when a project goes through to the city council, it goes through a variety of committees, Planning and Transportation Committee, Architectural Review Board. The Palo Alto Unified School District has a similar set of committees specifically around bike and pedestrian improvements that have a particular cadence to them. And so part of what XCAP recommended is really working with PAUSD and having PAUSD identify kind of what are the committees that they feel need to be giving specific feedback and how to create a process to be able to do that formally. And that it really ought to be formal. What we've learned is sort of the informal thing, it gets easy to be pushed aside. And obviously, COVID happened in the middle of all this, so the school district and the community and everybody else became quite distracted, understandably. But as Larry mentioned, this is a project that's going to take at least till the end of the decade. There is time to get this feedback. And the important thing is not just getting feedback for the sake of feedback, but of course, getting it when they can be part of the design review as, as further details are hammered out, and that's sort of the key here. And obviously, having further community outreach, we found that we had a lot of public comment from folks who live closest to the rail line, understandably. We had much less feedback, if any, from neighborhoods that are further away, like, you know, Crescent Park or Baron Park. And that's, that's a function of how these things work typically. But, you know, again, if this is going to be a 10, 15, 20-year project that'll go on in Palo Alto, we're going to have to have really consistent community communication and outreach on this issue generally. And so we should really start to try to build those muscles to make sure we get that outreach. We also identified interim technical work that could be done to help narrow the range of alternatives in South Palo Alto. So first among those, as I mentioned earlier, was there should be further iteration of the underpass alternative. Like I said, it got the least amount of review. It certainly got the same number of pictures, and it did get some review. But I just want to stress that it came out after COVID. It never really had the benefit of a public meeting, although it was part of a online town hall. It just didn't have that ability for people to kind of answer questions and explain it. And frankly, from, I don't want to put words in the engineer's mouth, but from an engineering perspective, they worry just sort of about more simple things. Do you raise the tracks up or down? The underpass alternative relies heavily on moving roads and bikes and pedestrians. And so it just takes a different level of iteration and what feels probably to civil engineers like a way more detailed approach for this level. But, but it makes it so that that alternative in particular, when you look at it against the other ones, is not quite on a level playing field for, for the public and everybody else to make decisions. So for that reason, we think it deserves further iteration. Another recommendation that we recommend, that we put forth in the report is that in order to close Churchill, you would have to do these road mitigations, but you also at some point have to close Churchill to be able to build the bike ped tunnel that we proposed. And so in advance of doing that, you need to find a safe place for the kids to cross. And it turns out that at SEAL and similarly at Loma Verde, there have been plans previously put in the comprehensive plan and the bike plan to talk about ways to have the bikes and peds connect to the other side. And what we're proposing is those are interim mitigations that need to be done first. I'll go into a little bit more of that in a second. We also are going to talk about geotechnical and groundwater issues and some additional traffic mitigations. So I just talked about the underpass alternative and that it differed significantly from how it was presented, but needs to be looked at again. And so here's the part about the bike ped crossing. So SEAL in particular, in North Palo Alto, on the west side of the tracks, if you had a SEAL undercrossing, it would pop up in Pierce Park. And that would not only provide a more direct, safer route to school, it could be built as a mitigation before you have to close Churchill, or actually on any alternative that you would eventually do for Churchill. In addition, it would actually help reduce some of the bike ped traffic on the congested Calab Tunnel and on the eventual Churchill Tunnel. So having multiple ways to cross obviously makes it so that there's less crowding of bikes and peds when they go through there. Oops, sorry about that. For South Palo Alto, something similar, the, the, there isn't really any place between Meadow and Charleston where you could have a bike ped underpass other than at Meadow and Charleston and have some sort of connection because the streets are not a grid-like pattern down there, particularly on the east side between Meadow and Charleston, you have the Circles neighborhood. So the closest already identified crossing that, that XCAP found was the Loma Verde Crossing. And I do want to say, it was originally taken out of XCAP's purview because it was included in the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan because it makes sense, given the location, to the kind of stuff that the NVCAP was working on. But as we got further down into our, looking, thinking about construction down the road, we realized that at some point in the future, regardless of what alternative is selected, there's going to be considerable long-term construction at a minimum for two years, at a potential maximum of six to eight years at the Meadow and Charleston crossings. And you will need another place for bikes and peds to get through safely. And so again, exploring the Loma Verde Tunnel provides a kind of critical missing link that was already identified for other reasons, but in this case, provides a premitigation to the eventual construction of grade separations. Geotechnical and groundwater work. So several of the alternatives require going underground somewhat. We've, of course, the trench, but the hybrid and the Meadow Charleston underpass, and actually, the Churchill underpass, all require significant excavation. And as it turns out, the land can vary very differently. So just because you did a test drill in one site doesn't mean that further away, it's going to be exactly the same. So early site investigation helps avoid surprises and risks. I do want to make it clear that typically in civil engineering projects, let's say you are building a theater. You know ultimately, at the end of the day, your product will be some sort of theater that holds people, and they will do the geotechnical work to be able to confirm that the design for the theater meets the land that they have underneath it. In the case of grade separations, in my experience in following the high-speed rail project, it was oftentimes the geotechnical work that actually helped figure out which was the right grade separation to do because you don't actually know whether your answer is going to be something elevated, something in the middle, something underground. So part of what XCAP is proposing is doing things a little bit out of order than they might normally be done, and that's to do some early geotechnical and groundwater analysis to see whether you can maybe rule out certain alternatives that may or not, may not be possible, and also to give more refined cost estimates. All of the cost estimates that we have are very generic ballpark things and rely heavily on what's below ground. And I think the most important one, of course, is whether the trench would be possible because it is among the most complicated. You're talking about having something run the length of the right-of-way, and you have to deal with the creeks, and that is not an insignificant issue. And again, at our second presentation, we will have a much deeper conversation about that. We have recommendations for an updated traffic study. Going back to the Churchill alternative, you, there was a, it was a six-three vote. I was part of the minority. But the minority, the majority actually went along with the minorities' recommendations, which are to look at having an updated traffic study. And so we made some specific recommendations, I won't read them all. But, you know, the traffic study that was done goes until 2030, which is the natural endpoint based on how the comprehensive plan works and the regional model. It's complicated, but this is going to be something that takes a long time, and odds are that you will need to update these forecasts, not the least of which is if other big projects change in our area, they will impact these things. And so we made some specific suggestions on recommendations for updating the traffic study. Last, the XCAP, that we had a noise and vibration study, which was another big breakthrough for, for the amount of work that we did. The biggest takeaway, which again, we'll probably talk about more at the next meeting, but the biggest takeaway is that the, the largest reduction for noise actually comes from reducing the horns and the bells and the gate, and the gate ringing when you finally separate. But the community was concerned in some of the graphics that were provided for how sound travels, particularly in South Palo Alto. When you have a train on a viaduct, there was a question, the, the graphics showed how houses in the first row might be impacted and the second row might be impacted. And there was some questions about what are the impacts in a place like Charleston Meadows neighborhood where you have a single-story overlay, meaning the first row of homes are all single-story? And then if you have a second-story home on the other side, what might happen? So it's not a full noise and vibration study that needs to be done. It was more an addendum to the work, or at least being able to address that particular concern of the neighborhoods that we thought really should be addressed. And lastly, and I would be remiss if I don't identify Tony Carrasco for this one, XCAP recommended an urban designer take a better look at all of the recommendations, no matter which ones we're going to go with, to try to make them more comfortable for all modes. You know, he's a, he's a lover of urban design, and what we're really sensitive to is making sure that we come up with something that speaks to Palo Alto and is part of Palo Alto and leaves everybody in a better place, but hopefully uses some of the design tricks that help achieve that, you know, combined with some good engineering. The big thing that you guys as council members will also have to do is continue advocacy with Caltrain. In our next presentation, when we get into technical things, we're going to talk about some of the technical assumptions that Caltrain used and how changing some small numbers might make some big differences, even in the designs that we've had to date. I know you're familiar with, we've talked about percent grade, but we have vertical curve coming up at some point that's going to interest you. And another thing that came up was XCAP actually looked at some, exploring some new construction methodologies to be able to save time and money. So small things like reducing the size of the bridge deck when you have an underpass really helps save on how much excavation you have to do. And so some of the things that we're proposing is that Palo Alto really take an advocacy standpoint with Caltrain to help them see that helping to really reduce costs of all the grade separations by perhaps adjusting some of these numbers will help really achieve Caltrain's ultimate goal and will help all cities get their 41 grade separations. And lastly, we have some specifics about safety improvements along the entire Caltrain corridor. And, and I can go into that, I think I have another slide about that. So going back, we have further community outreach. So again, formalizing bike pedestrian input, particularly with PSC and the bike community and other key stakeholders, getting stakeholder feedback for the project and improving community support. Stanford, I would be remiss if I didn't also mention Stanford, obviously, an important neighbor, an important partner. And I hope that we're able to kind of pull them into this long-term conversation. And finally, on safety, we have a lot of technical suggestions about how to make the corridor safer. But, but one thing that came to our attention really through the work of one of our XCAP members who left us early, but Pat Lau, is that we don't have uniform fencing along the west side of the tracks. And that is one way, once we've done the grade separations, to also help protect access to the corridor and just kind of have a means restriction policy there. And so that is something that isn't necessarily, when you're thinking of grade separations, you're very focused on what's happening at each of these crossings. But as policymakers, we really want you to sort of make sure you elevate that conversation with, with Caltrain and sort of think about really how to provide safety along the entirety of the corridor, as if you don't have anything else to be doing. This was the graph that Ed so eloquently tried to describe, and I'm not going to try to do any better here. But I will say that for graphical reasons, this is what XCAP is proposing, that we have some money available already for Measure B and that we try to move some of the things that are typically done maybe by Caltrain, move those up and do those earlier, including the hydraulics and geotechnical and some of the bike and road mitigations, and try to get those in ahead first to help us really figure out what alternatives are possible and determine their constructability. So that's what this graphic tries to say. And so finally, here are the recommended council actions against, again, we are recommending the closure of Churchill, or the majority is, with the mitigations. We are asking or recommending that we do bike option number two. And the reason for that is, of course, that the bikes and the pedestrians get to go under Alma and the train tracks, which we thought was super important. We have the interim traffic mitigations. We're asking you to take a look at SEAL and Alma and Loma Verde, Alma as premitigations to construction. We're suggesting that you update your bike and pedestrian connections as part of the bike master plan, formalize your outreach to PAUSD and others, remove the tunnels from further consideration, update the traffic study and identify mitigations needed for South Palo Alto in advance of grade separations. We didn't really have much to add in terms of what specifics there are, but it's going to be a long- much to add in terms of what specifics there are, but it's going to be a long construction time and we'll need to figure out what to do there. Continue work to iterate the underpass alternative, begin geotechnical and hydraulic analysis, hire an urban designer to help with the design of alternatives and participate in the corridor-wide grade step study and working with Caltrain. And for Palo Alto Avenue, work with Caltrain and Menlo Park on the San Francisco Creek Bridge. So I'm going to pause there and let you guys take a breath. And we are ready to answer questions. I'm going to mute myself and I'll wait to hear from you guys. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, so council members, maybe just put your hand up if you think we should do a round of questions only or prefer we go to the public first. Anybody really want to do questions? Alrighty then. So we'll go to the public. So if you would like to ask a question or make a statement as part of the public, please raise your hand at this point. Right? And we're going to go ahead and go with two minutes and groups of five will get eight minutes. City clerk, do you want to take it away?
If any members of the public that wish to speak on the grade separation item, please raise your hand at this time. We'll begin with Tom Kellerman. Tom Kellerman, please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Just one moment. I have to get my notes in front of me just a second. Okay, thank you. I am addressing the proposed mitigations for the recommended closure of the Churchill Crossing. We have previously submitted a more detailed discussion of this topic, and I ask that you consider the information in that submission as you analyze the alternatives under consideration. In June 2018, the council adopted a motion with respect to the Churchill Crossing that requires the council to quote, "study additional options for addressing traffic in the Embarcadero Road underpass area, including actions to minimize redirected traffic onto residential streets in adjacent neighborhoods and commit to adopting appropriate mitigations to address the impacts." Mitigations set forth in the XCAP recommendation do not fulfill this standard. Shortcomings include the following. The design, the traffic study and the XCAP report specifically state that the proposed mitigations are quote, "early conceptual designs." Seven out of nine of the final XCAP members agreed that additional mitigation measures should be considered. The XCAP report acknowledges that the additional potential mitigations have not been studied and will require additional analysis. The independent analysis of the, and independent analysis of the traffic study concluded that there were several deficiencies in the traffic study that the methodology used is insufficient at this time to support a final conclusion. The traffic study solely measures quote, "level of service," which only addresses the volume of vehicular traffic and does not account for pedestrian and bicycle safety or impact on residential streets. Finally, no measurements of existing traffic on Embarcadero were undertaken, which means that the ability of Embarcadero to accommodate redirected traffic resulting from the closure is unknown. The staff report provided to council provides a somewhat unclear statement regarding the tasks that have been completed. This statement refers to quote, "building an informed understanding of grade separation options as well as likely implications for nearby streets." As detailed in our submission, it's clear that the necessary level of analysis is by no means complete at this point. Accordingly, we ask the council to ensure that the necessary data constituent input and analysis be completed before any decisions are made with respect to the Churchill Crossing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellerman. Our next speaker is Susan Newman, speaking for Susan Mitchell, Lawrence Lau, Kate McKenzie, Jim Cornet, and Kathy Jordan. Ms. Susan Newman, please go ahead.
There we go. Hi there. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a coalition of residents from the South Gate neighborhood and the neighborhoods along and adjacent to Embarcadero. Speaking in part, one people speaking for them. We want to acknowledge the sustained work of the XCAP through these difficult times and their sincere efforts to evaluate the alternatives from multiple perspectives. It is a hard job. And we especially wish to thank Nadia Nyack for her leadership. She has worked tirelessly to promote a spirit of open inquiry among XCAP participants as well as to produce the impressive compilation of information and analysis that you received tonight. However, as I have written in a rather lengthy letter to all of you at council, the XCAP process has laid bare significant problems and unanswered questions pertaining to the selection of grade separation designs. In the case of South Palo Alto, these were sufficient to prevent the panel from arriving at a majority, let alone a consensus recommendation. We feel that the issues associated with the Churchill Crossing are equally profound and should have resulted in an informed discussion of the alternatives rather than a single recommendation. I don't want to go through those, these issues in detail. You heard some of them from Tom, but I'll just mention a few highlights as context for our, our recommendations for council's next steps. First and foremost, the Hexagon Traffic Study, while it's a good start, is simply inadequate for anticipating the true impacts of closure, not only on bicycles, but also on car traffic. And that's for reasons that I suspect many of you have already heard or might have even said before. The time horizon is too short, the projected increase in traffic is too small, the scope of analysis is too narrow, only looks at a few intersections, ignores network effects, doesn't look at interactions between vehicles and bikes and pads, blah, blah. I could go on. But there is another kind of narrowness I haven't heard mentioned, but I think we should consider. The study calculates LOS for two hours during weekday peak traffic. And while this approach may throw light on congestion and delay under conditions of heaviest use, it ignores the fact that most Palo Alto residential travel takes place outside commute hours. Eliminating Churchill as a way to cross the tracks will add, will add inconvenience and stress to residents' routine trips throughout the day and on weekends by making traffic on El Camino, Oregon Page Mill, and Embarcadero that is currently bearable during non-peak hours, more like peak hour commuter traffic. A second major issue with the recommendation has to do with the XCAP process, specifically the lack of adequate representation of the community. You heard about this a little already. The, in spite of the early efforts, the XCAP that persisted through the pandemic is missing the expanded community part of the expanded community advisory panel. And we don't think this decision should be taken without serious engagement with major stakeholders like PAUSD and Paly, the business community at both Town and Country and California Avenue. Organizations concerned with bicycle and pedestrian access and safety, et cetera. You have the list already. Representation of residential perspectives is inadequate as well, though, we believe. The neighborhoods I represent are among those that will be most immediately and continuously impacted. While South Gate nominally has a representative on the panel, she does not represent the majority of South Gate residents as a later presentation will show. And the other neighborhoods near Embarcadero have had no representation at all. These factors should also undermine faith in the majority recommendation. Setting aside these critiques, we believe that closing Churchill is simply the wrong choice. It rather obviously doesn't meet the key requirement to facilitate movement across the corridor for all modes of traffic. And by compromising access to an important entrance of Palo Alto High, it seems to fall down in quote, "maintaining access to neighborhoods, parks, and schools." Secondly, and really importantly, closure serious equity concerns by benefiting one group of residents who feel they have too much traffic on their street at the expense of others. And we don't believe it's our only choice. In our view, a closer reading of the XCAP report shows that the other two alternatives do as well or better in many cases with respect, or with respect to many of the council criteria. So the question is, what should happen next? First, with respect to Churchill, we ask that you continue to treat all three alternatives at Churchill as viable and worthy options. Section 3, 7.3.2 makes several good recommendations for providing an adequate assessment of the partial underpass, which we believe has received insufficient attention. We believe there are other steps to take on its behalf and recommend that the city reengage with Michael Price and Michael Chacon to determine which limitations of the current design can be overcome and how. One recommendation for having a fair shot, for giving a fair shot to the partial underpass also interesting, interestingly applies to the viaduct. Engage with urban and landscape designers to further in, in further, excuse me, engage with urban and landscape designers in further design and engineering to address the integration of each alternative, alternative with the city's look and feel. To get a sense of how much difference this could make in the case of the partial underpass, I recommend you take a look at the Two Michaels website, With respect to the viaduct, many of the XCAP's recommendation for a viaduct in South Palo Alto could be usefully applied to a viaduct at Churchill. One recommendation that is particular interest to some of us is to consider positioning the viaduct closer to Alma. Shifting the structure east on the corridor would leave room for taller plantings near the fence to soften and partially screen the viaduct from residents' view. Based on conversations I had with engineers at AECOM earlier in the process, I believe this move is possible and might eliminate the need for shoe fly tracks along Alma as well. But looking more broadly, we believe that it may be appropriate to concentrate efforts for further study and development on South Palo Alto options. There is more to sword out there and the need is significant. However, we don't want to see this happen if it means that council bows to any pressure to do something immediately by selecting the supposedly easiest, cheapest alternative at Churchill. To close, we believe that in spite of its flaws and what we see as faulty conclusions by the majority, the XCAP process has opened up a design space in ways that could allow us to produce integrated vehicular and bike ped solutions that will better satisfy the city council's criteria while meeting the true transportation needs of residents throughout Palo Alto for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Our next speaker is Steve Carlson. He is a spokesperson for a group of five. And he will be presenting as well. So Steve, if you can note that you've been promoted as panelist in order for you to share your screen. And I do want to note to the public that after Steve finishes, we will stop adding people to the speaker list. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm attempting to share my screen. I do have a slide deck. But I'm getting a message that someone else is doing, is sharing.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen now. Please note that you have eight minutes and we are keeping track. Let you know when the timer's coming.
Thank you very much. Are you able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Thank you. Steve Carlson from South Gate and as one who sat in on many of the XCAP meetings from the very beginning as an observer, I'd like to second, third, the effort that Nadia Nyack has put in. Amazing time and effort. All the XCAP members have put in a ton of time, but particularly Nadia. Today, I'd like to share directly with the council a survey which was conducted in August and shared with the XCAP. I'd like to begin by highlighting this is not the same survey which was presented to council 18 months ago. This is new information. So why do it? Part of the XCAP's charge from the council was community outreach. And yet, those of us observing the process could see that there were some unintended gaps. For example, the large Churchill-South Gate specific community meeting was canceled just as the pandemic struck. Meetings switched to Zoom, which wasn't for everyone. But most importantly, the majority of the neighborhood did not have representation on XCAP to give input throughout the process. Once there was good information regarding all Churchill intersection options, the second survey was launched. Knowing that there was some diversity of opinion in the neighborhood, a group of us reached out to the entire neighborhood in an objective manner and without lobbying for or against any of the alternative options. The goal was to provide a forum to let neighbors speak for themselves. In these few minutes, I will walk through our methodology, share the results, and then refer you to the appendix to see individual comments for the residents. Starting with the methodology. This survey was offered to all residents by email, by flyers on doorsteps, and by next-door South Gate. Seeking informed opinions prior to the survey, each participant received an email update on the current grade separation options and links to fact sheets, renderings, analyses available on connectingpaloalto.com. The results I'm going to show you come directly from Survey Monkey. We provide zoning map showing participation by street. And just to reemphasize, those conducting the survey did not make any attempt to influence the answers to questions. In the informational email, there was no attempt to lobby for any particular option. This first slide is just a heat map and it shows the participants by household. And there were 122 households. There were, the goal was to have one participant from each household. There were a few doubles. We shared with XCAP the analysis which showed those few dual responses were distributed evenly throughout and results were the same, including or excluding them. On the next slide is just a numeric representation and, and shows the percentage participation by street. You can see a high rate kind of across the board. It may look initially like Churchill is underrepresented. That issue is due to apartments and duplexes in the last block, closest El Camino. There are, they, they're renters and we speculate as renters, they were less invested. Excluding that block, Churchill had the highest participation at 88%. And now to the results. Residents were asked to rate themselves in terms of how well-informed they felt they were. There's some complexity to these issues, but South Gate residents have done a good job of taking the time to stay informed. And now the content slides. The first question, based on your current knowledge, what is your opinion about closing Churchill? As you can see, the vast majority of the neighborhood do not feel that this is the option which makes the most sense. In fact, many were originally surprised that it was even on the table as an option. Residents not in favor are concerned of closure, are concerned about being disconnected from the neighbors and schools directly across the tracks and downtown, resulting in a change in the culture and character of the neighborhood over time. They're also concerned about emergency response times, travel and commute times, even for simple errands. But beyond just the neighborhood, they're equally concerned about the impact for all of Palo Alto resulting from increased congestion by eliminating a significant traffic artery, which pre-pandemic was carrying 9,500 cars per day. It's this last issue which leads some residents on Churchill actually to favor closure. In public comments to XCAP, they've been very open about their impression that traffic has increased over time. Residents on Mariposa have concerns about the prospect of a viaduct and impact on their properties. Although we don't have time to cover them here, you'll see comments from all perspectives in the appendix. And this slide deck was shared with, with council members. The next question asks for opinions about the three options on the table. As you can see, the partial underpass is clearly the preferred option of the majority of the neighborhood. The numbers here shift a bit because some of the people who indicated that they would be comfortable with closure in the prior question actually chose the partial underpass as their preferred option on this question. And lastly, there was some trending, which was which was observed. In the interest of data privacy, we're not showing the exact votes from each household. However, one trend was clear. 83% of the pro-closure sentiment came from four specific blocks in the northeast corner of the neighborhood. Every block has votes for partial underpass except Every block has votes for partial underpass except Churchill Avenue. And in summary, this is a very important topic to the residents of Southgate and they're interested in being engaged. With a predictive sample size of fifty-nine percent, the majority of residents do not feel that closure is the best option for the Churchill intersection. The majority of the neighborhood is also supportive of the partial underpass option. And while the strongest arguments against church closing Churchill will come from the community-wide perspective, because this is really about the long-term vision for all of Palo Alto, we do hope that the council will strongly consider this input from its uniquely positioned and impacted neighborhood as well as others close by.
Hello, Steve. You have fifty seconds left.
Okay, thank you. The uh, the slide deck we provided you and we don't have time to walk through the comments here, but I'm going to scroll down through the appendix. There are a couple of additional slides from the survey and then you will see comments. Uh, and we'd encourage any of you to uh take a moment to take a look at these. In the comments from August, questions were already being raised about the longer term impacts of the pandemic. And it's now clear that those impacts may well affect the original Caltrain service and business plan, uh which was at the time the primary argument for grade separation. Facebook, for example, is predicting that it will, the fifty percent of its workforce will be remote over the next five to ten years.
Hi, Steve. Um, so you have used your eight minutes. Um, unfortunately, we will have too close to comment at the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the Southgate neighborhood would be appreciative of being constructively engaged and represented as solutions are being considered as we go forward. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Indra Manga, a spokesperson um for Barbara Haslett, Rachel Kellerman, Sarah Curtin, Dexter Curtin, and Rashma Singh. You'll have um eight minutes. I'm going to promote you as panelist for you to share your screen for your presentation as well.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, yes, we can. You'll have eight minutes and I'll give you a notification.
Thank you, uh, City Council and the X cap committee representatives. Uh, one of the things I think that's very clear from um uh to you is that this community has been very engaged in this process. So two years of presentations at city council meetings, at X cap meetings, multiple emails and reports, which all got uh kind of consolidated into that X cap recommendation or eight or ten recommendations to you. What I wanted to do was to share how the people living in this neighborhood truly feel about this issue. And with that in mind, we ran a survey of uh neighborhoods that were not represented by the X cap com- uh committee. You have seen that the X subcommittee has produced, it doesn't have representation from Stanford. Uh, yeah, the uh representation from north of Embarcadero uh left before the critical deliberation phase of the process. And and most of the X cap committee is clustered uh around uh the name, uh the decision points, which is around Churchill. So it was important for me to kind of bring to the council the views of what we call, what I call unrepresented neighborhoods before the city council could make a decision. Uh, I mean, one of the comments, I'm keeping some comments from uh the survey down below for you to read. Closing Churchill will affect all Palo Alto, even us Saudis. And I think that's something that a lot of people felt strongly about. Now, the process we followed, uh just so that I can share with you, it was conducted in coordination with number of concerned citizens from Professor Will and Barker on Southgate residents. We use the same process which Steve uh mentioned. We use Survey Monkey to administer the questions. We use uh the same question set, but augmented it a little from Southgate survey to make sure that we didn't uh go off in a different direction and the council could get a uniform view. Now, unfortunately, the survey was conducted during C V COVID restrictions late last year, which limited physical contact, so we could not go door to door and get more representation. We only relied on virtual and next door type mechanisms uh to solicit responses for that. Uh, and we asked everyone to verify their local residence. We knew where they were coming from, but we promised it to be anonymous, so we're not giving you the vote per residence for you to look at. The, so uh what did we get? We got hundred plus respondents from seven neighborhoods. So we got a really strong showing. Each respondent represented uh one household because we had only one response per household. For people that entered the uh survey or started the survey, it was a hundred percent completion rate. That was amazing. And then one of the questions was, do you want to keep informed as the neighborhood uh community does uh interact with X cap and with the city council? And seventy-five percent requested to be on an email list and continued engagement. And we are continuing to share these results with them and as uh more things come up. Now you may ask, where did the people come from? What was their uh uh representation like? I used a Google map to kind of map all the addresses I got. So you can see obviously what we targeted was a cluster on University South. Lot of respondents from the Crescent Park, Duvenick and Community Center area, some from the College Terrace area, which was not represented in some of the other things. And then scattered as people forwarded that to their friends and and asked them to uh uh take part in the survey. We got representation from other neighborhoods uh within the Palo Alto. Now I'll go question by question on what uh uh the responses were and the questions was, we can uh see that I'm sorry, it's taking a little bit time to update. So question one, have you kept up with the discussion of cities plan to make significant changes to the Churchill intersection? And eighty percent of the responded said yes. And what's, what's important for the city council to note is that this topic of closer Churchill has a huge potential to impact the lives of people living in Palo Alto. And they are very concerned and they're keeping up with this. So that's great engagement uh for you guys uh to know. It's a very important topic to the people here. Now, uh, the second question. There is a delay uh on update, so uh I'm hoping. How informed do you feel you are on the issue? Ninety-five percent of the respondents felt they were very or somewhat informed about the issue. Only five percent felt that they were not informed. Uh, this means again, I think uh that the people are following the city council, the news uh items, X cap and all the decisions very closely. Based on your current knowledge, what is your opinion about closing Churchill? Now from this neighborhood, we got eighty-two percent against closing Churchill with only eight point seven percent in favor of closing Churchill, very different results from the Southgate survey. And uh, and around five percent or five to six percent were undecided uh based on what they knew. And and if you saw there were five to six percent that were uninformed, so that matches really quickly. Uh, now this is dramatically opposite to the X cap recommendation and the vote that you saw, which I believe is tied to the lack of equitable representation within that group. One of the other questions uh we enhanced from the Southgate survey was uh instead of giving three options for uh uh to the, to the city, and I know this is taking a little bit of delay to update on your end. Let's see. You know, uh, we added a fourth option called no build with safety improvements. Now this was different from the Southgate survey because no build with safety improvements was one of the options in the virtual town hall that was not there before. So we wanted to add that and capture the order of preferences. So instead of asking people what they liked or didn't like, we gave them four choices. What is your most first choice? What is your second choice, third choice and fourth choice? So if you look at these uh graphs, let me see if it.
Hi, Indra. I do want to let you know that you have about a minute left.
Sure. If you look at these graphs, the first choice for people fifty-six percent said no build with safety improvements. If you add them up as first choice, ninety percent opposed closing Churchill uh where and if you look at the second choice, both partial underpass and viaduct had almost equal representation. Obviously, you see a higher partial underpass as first choice. So if you add that up, partial underpass was obviously the preferred choice and closing Churchill was again uh not a preferred choice. I just repeat, I'm gonna leave this for you to read on your own. One of the other questions we added was, in light of the pandemic, should the city of Palo Alto pause its process and await more clarity? And I think one of the things I read is one of uh responses from the survey respondent. Making the decision about the train during first six months of shelter in place assumes a level of knowledge from X cap about the future that borders on hubris. And I think what we uh what the people in Palo Alto are requesting is to do more study, to pause and to consider all options before making a decision on this. So let me go and summarize the takeaways. Ninety percent of the respondents opposed closing Churchill. The majority felt leaving Churchill as this would be the best choice for now. For great separation, the partial underpass is the preferred option of the people. Why that surprised me and su- and remains a surprisingly strong alternative. And Palo Alto is opposed making consequential and expensive decisions about the great crossings when so many strategic factors remain uncertain.
Hi, Indra. Um, so your time is up. If you can finish your thought, please.
Last slide. Uh, so our ask from city council is not to adopt a vote on any proposal with respect to Churchill until there can be a more inclusive community process. It is clear that the community is not well represented here, but with the varying uh uh feedback that you're getting. And a thorough city planning analysis of all processes uh considered as a whole will be important. So while I heard Larry talk about uh Churchill and permanency, uh, all the mitigations require doing a lot more changes, which are more permanent changes at other intersections. And I would urge this council to take a holistic view than a very narrow view. And the council should prioritize solutions to solve Palo Alto if, if this is uh because the Palo Alto Avenue could influence dramatically the Churchill and that was brought up even by the city uh administrator. So figuring out what is happening with the bridge and the Palo Alto Avenue because that could affect Churchill. I think let's focus on South Palo Alto first while that gets.
Mister Indra Manga, thank you.
That's it. And I have shared this presentation and you have got more comments that you can read on your own in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Eduardo F. Locke, followed by Young J. O. You'll have two minutes if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. X cap member for the amazing work. A hundred and seventy-one pages in the report with additional fifty-seven pages in appendix one alone and more pages in additional appendices. I am for closing Churchill and I agree with the points made by Larry Klein. Thank you. I am for closing Churchill's and is the best alternative by far according to recommendations made by the X cap team. One, it provides the lowest cost and the city needs to focus its resources on how to solve the larger problems in Meadow and Charleston. It provides the most improvements to most Palo Alto neighbors, which much better bike flow and by far the safest alternative to twenty-one hundred and twenty-four Palo Alto students and hundreds of childrens living on Churchill and Southgate. And they're not being represented by a lot of the people and they're definitely not being represented by the surveys outlined before. The included mitigations improve the two north Palo Alto arteries of Oregon and Barcadaro in ways that will benefit all Palo Alto neighbors. Aesthetically, as outlined by Larry Klein, is an important aspect to consider. Closure will benefit everyone in Palo Alto. Appendix one, page thirty-one, analysis of the three alternatives shows how po- Churchill closures by far the best third, with a few as negative impacts and highest positive impact. Alternatives are existential threats to Mariposa and Churchill versus the Churchill calls closure causing what opponents call inconveniences. I mean existential threat since these neighbors will have a radical change in their lives when either trains are overhead in their backyards or twenty-foot trenches are in front of them, a significant threat to the twenty-one hundred and twenty-four Palo Alto students and hundreds of childrens living in Churchill and Southgate who have to deal with this increased traffic. My neighbor was hit by a speeding car in Churchill. Two of our pets were run over by speeding cars in Churchill. This is far worse than an inconvenience and I urge you to vote with what the X cap recommended, which is a closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. Our next speaker is Young J. O. And followed by Jason Stinson and Carrie Wagner. Young J. O., please um unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes for your public comment.
Good afternoon. Distinguished members of the Palo Alto City Council. Uh, my name is Young J. O. and I live in Southgate. After three years of, almost three years of conducting research and gathering public opinion and engaging in meticulous and comprehensive analysis, we're hopefully getting close to making some decisions on this very important question. Regarding the crossing uh on Churchill and Alma, I would implore you to support the Churchill closure with mitigation as the best option. First and foremost, this plan is the most cost-effective amongst the other plans. Church closure with mitigation is estimated to cost a fraction of the other proposed plans. Secondly, the plan will preserve the peaceful ambience of Palo Alto by requiring the least amount of construction and disruption. It will also give the best access to the pedestrians and cyclists who frequent and live in Palo Alto. It is also the greenest of all the plan being proposed. Thirdly, the other plans present clear safety issues for both Palo Alto students and the growing population of uh mature baby boomers who live in, in this area. Most recently, a gentleman in his seventies was struck and killed by train in this very intersection. Last and but least, excellent research analysis confirming that the traffic impact of Churchill closure will be minimal. Some Southgates residents support the underpass plan, but it will be the aesthetic disaster. I humbly ask the city council votes in favor of Churchill closure with mitigation as the best option to keep our city safe, quiet and beautiful for all of us and for future generations. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Stinson, followed by Carrie Wagner and then K Z S U Studio Q. Jason, if you can unmute yourself, I'll have two minutes on the timer for you.
Thank you. Um, thanks to everyone. Uh, again, you know, echoing all the comments. Thanks to X cap and and all the studies that have happened over the last, actually, this has been going on, I think now, as we said for twelve years um from the beginning. Um, at some point, we're gonna need to make a decision. I I agree with all of our neighbors that are hopeful that we never have to make a decision on this and we can keep everything exactly as is, but I I suspect at some point we'll need to make a decision and that we people in the community that are going to be unhappy about that. We've learned from the recent Castileia process uh that uh there's a really nice pattern for people that are unhappy with the decisions or the direction that we can cast shade on uh representation, we can cast shade on uh engagement, we can cast shade on the studies. Um, the reality is we have a traffic study. Um, we've had, as as we've heard from uh the group speakers, we've had massive engagement from the community. This is one of the most engaged communities on any issue in the city that I think we've seen in a decade. Um, so people are very aware of what's going on. We need to make some decisions. Um, we have a relatively inexpensive option on the table. Uh, we have the traffic studies that support that there won't be additional traffic, which is what most of the rest of Palo Alto is worried about. We need to, we need to move forward with this decision. I support the closure of Churchill. Um, you know, the idea that um we haven't engaged and we haven't heard or um that we need to somehow start over again and uh restart the entire process, I think is is a mistake. And uh, you know, I've heard we, you shouldn't bow to pressure immediately. There's no immediate pressure other than the fact that we've been working on this for a very long time. We have all the data sitting in front of us to take a look at. I I urge you to 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 take. I urge you to, to, to take XCAP's recommendation and move forward on the Churchill closure and the mitigations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Our next speaker is Carrie Wagner, followed by KZSU Studio Q, then Terry Locke. Ms. Carrie Wagner, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for your public comment.
Hi, thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the XCAP members for their, their tremendous commitment to this process. The amount of data they've had to sort through and make decisions about is really quite, I'm just, I'm amazed at the progress they were able to make with this so quickly, honestly. I live in Charleston Meadows, so I'm gonna be speaking about the Charleston and the Meadow intersections. Most of my neighbors, in fact, I don't know any neighbor who supports the viaduct app option down here. Most cities are actually tearing down inner city viaducts. Look at the Embarcadero in San Francisco. I don't know if you're familiar with Rochester, New York, but they've torn down their inner loop and it really, really unites the neighborhood, unifies the city. And I think that's a trend that's gonna continue. I don't really understand why we would put a wall up through, through Palo Alto. And the other thing I'd like to say is I really appreciate the XCAP's recommendations for improving the bike pedestrian crossings and the underpasses or overpasses across Alma. South Palo Alto has no pedestrian protected underpass or overpass. They're all in North Palo Alto. So regardless of the decisions here, please look closely at, at the Loma Verde crossing for, you know, a safety improvement for bikes and pedestrians. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is KZSU Studio Q, followed by Terry Lack and then Arnaut Bolins. KZSU Studio Q, you have been asked to be unmuted. You will have two minutes for public comment.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I, I need to correct this. This is Mark Lawrence. I am running KZSU Studio Q, but I am speaking only for myself and, and not as a representative of KZSU or Stanford. The highest priority given in this entire project is to improve east-west connectivity for all modes of transport. That was listed by the council as the most important thing. And yet we have some folks recommending we do precisely the opposite of closing a connection. I've seen really no reason suggested why we should close one of the existing connections. Apparently, it would benefit a small minority of the people in Southgate, but even that neighborhood is mostly opposed to it. We have this phenomenon, I see here over and over again of private citizens, it seems like reverse eminent domain. It's private citizens taking public land or amenities for their own benefit. We have a street here that's used by ten thousand people a day. And a few dozen people propose that we inconvenience these ten thousand people every day forever so they can have less traffic in their neighborhood. It's not a reasonable thing to even consider. And the best way to move this forward is take closure of any of the crossings off the table and look at how we can address the goals that the council actually set, which is to improve connectivity for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Terry Lack. I do want to note that we have two names of Terry Lack. One at right now and the other at number twenty-four. We asked that the first, one of them will allow them to speak and the other to wait until number twenty-four. And Terry Lack will be followed by Arnaut Bolins and Stephen Rosenblum. Terry Lack, if you can unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so you can take me off the twenty-four. I apologize. I had a little bit of connectivity issues. So first of all, thank you so much for letting me talk and thank you, XCAP. And what I wanna do is I wanna say just a couple of things. First of all, I think it's actually really smart to take the least expensive, best and easiest alternative. If, if someone asked me to take the least expensive, best and easy alternative, I would. XCAP made a recommendation after many, 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 many hours of study and we should take that very seriously. The idea of doing more studies on traffic makes very little sense since we've done extensive studies on traffic and those studies have proven there's no issue with closing Churchill. I am for that closure of Churchill. Studying more traffic now would actually not make sense because it's probably even better situation now. There is not gonna be a traffic issue. And I appreciate that some of my neighbors and others in the community want to have connectivity. I am all for that. But there are many crossings to get from one side of Palo Alto to the other. I've lived here all my life. It's very easy to get to one side to another. And destroying our community with big ditches and viaducts that are ugly and look into someone's home and the amount of turmoil that'll get to the people along those edges is nothing in comparison to, you know, what they're gonna go through is just huge in comparison to what a few minutes of extra driving is gonna be for other people, which probably won't even be that many more minutes because the traffic has gone down. And finally, I'd like to say the kids, I watch these kids go to school. Let's keep them safe. Traffic on Churchill is not safe. People speed and if we make it bigger, they'll speed more, it'll be more dangerous and we will have children, pets and people hit. And that's just a fact. So please take XCAP's recommendation and close Churchill. Please make us safer. Keep the connectivity. I agree with that, but take the recommendation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Terry. Our next speaker is Arnaut Bolins, followed by Stephen Rosenblum, then Drew. Arnaut, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for public comment.
Thank you very much. Dear city council members, I am Arnat Buland. And I am a member of the Palo Alto Council of PTA's Traffic Safety Committee, but tonight I'm actually speaking as an individual. First of all, I would like to thank the members of the XCAP for their hard work and the comprehensive reports they put together. Provided that mitigation measures are taken to prevent additional car traffic in neighborhoods, I agree with the recommendation of XCAP in favor of closing down Churchill for motorized traffic and building the bicycle pedestrian tunnel, option two. In addition, I would like to urge city council to further study the great separation options at Charleston and Meadow and to involve all the relevant stakeholders in this process. The directness of a trip is a very important variable that determines whether someone will bike or walk or choose another mode of transportation. To make sure that students continue to ride their bikes to Bali and do not cause extra traffic congestion, it's therefore very important that they can take the most direct route to school. This is a straight bicycle and pedestrian tunnel at Churchill Avenue. Obvious added benefits of this design is that it's by far the safest design for students crossing Alma and that it is much cheaper than building a crossing for motorized traffic. Unfortunately, regarding Charleston and Meadow, all of the current iterations of the designs have their own shortcomings. While it is great that bicycles and pedestrians are great separated in the partial underpass design, there are currently problems with very sharp corners in the design that make it nearly impossible to navigate on the bike. For all the other options, the intersection designs should be brought up to date using the latest NACTA design guidelines for protected intersection and traffic signal phasing. Lastly, I think it's very important for any future steps that there is active participation of stakeholders, including the Palo Alto Unified School Districts, Saver to School, the PTA Council and Payback. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Rosenblum, followed by Drew and then Mohammed Hadidi. Stephen, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for public comment.
Okay, yeah, thank you. My name is Stephen Rosenblum. I'm a resident of all Palo Alto and I'd like to thank the XCAP committee as well as my neighbor Nadia Knight for her excellent leadership. On the other hand, I'd like to point out that the XCAP committee is not a Brown Act committee. It was selected by the staff and there was no effort made to vet people's conflicts of interest. So there's no, no reason for the council to accept any recommendations it makes at face value. In fact, it would be a violation of the council's duty to do that. They need to make their own independent decisions. Secondly, the original complaint of the Churchill neighbors when this discussion started in two thousand eight was that the original proposal of great separations required eminent domain and a lot of taking of property. That's now off the table and their arguments are now degenerated into trying to make their part of Churchill into a bicycle and pedestrian street rather than a street with traffic. Pushing the ninety-five hundred cars a day that go on their street onto other neighborhood streets and onto Embarcadero and, and Oregon Expressway. Larry Klein makes the fallacious argument that closing Churchill is the cheapest, but that does not include the costs of the traffic mitigations necessary on Embarcadero and on Oregon Expressway. That has to be included. I'm a big fan of the viaduct as a citywide approach. It provides equity for everybody and it will also improve connectivity between the east and west sides of Palo Alto, where people can cross under the viaduct, not only at the street crossings but elsewhere. People could, could recreate under the viaduct if they wanted to. So I, I urge you to consider that as the, the alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Drew, followed by Mohammed Hadidi, followed by David Epstein. Drew, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for a public comment.
Good evening there. A couple of comments. It's broadly broad comments. One is there was talk about the four tracks and while Caltrain and high-speed rail point fingers at each other, there is a Caltrain option in the high-growth scenario where it's, it's all Caltrain growth that could drive a fourth track, the four tracks for some passing needs, so they can maintain express trains, which is very important for better service. I ride Caltrains. So we want express trains and stuff. So there are a few scenarios that four tracks are being driven purely on Caltrain in that very high, high-growth scenario. So it's not just a high-speed rail and not just a pointing fingers at each other. And then another broad comment was while many of these alternatives look very binary in a sense, there are some sub-alternatives with, within them and they don't need to be studied in detail at this point, but you can raise or lower the tracks some or the roads some just in minor amounts, a few feet, and they can have big impacts on how high the wall is or how high the viaduct is or how low the trench is or how, how deep the undercrossing is and stuff. And so that's just a variable that's not necessarily discussed. It's not, you know, at some point that can change some of the options a, a little bit and stuff. Just some of what I've heard about, you know, the good things or the bad things about different ones. And then lastly, and that was the main reason why I really actually wanted to join here and just said, I didn't get a chance and I want to say it publicly that I appreciate the XCAP members. I went to a lot of meetings and then watched them on Zoom and I appreciate the staff input. The meetings ran and like I would get agendas sent to me and the website worked. I'd click on a link and it just worked. There's all this stuff that just kind of worked. So I appreciate the XCAP members all their time. I appreciate the staff members who supported it and made it just work. And I also appreciate a few of the consultants I got to talk to early on and stuff and their time and effort. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mohammed Hadidi, followed by David Epstein, then David Kennedy. Mohammed, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for a public comment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so honorable members of the city council, I would like to start by thanking all XCAP members for dedicating months of hard work, meticulous analysis and probing questions in the midst of the pandemic to come up with their report. Unfortunately, some who don't like the results of the XCAP's work are trying to go into the question, into question the credibility and integrity of XCAP. I ask you to honor the XCAP work by taking to heart its analysis and recommendations. In particular, I also would like to ask you to accept the XCAP recommendation of closing Churchill with mitigations. The reasons are simple. Number one, cost. Number two, safety of Palo Alto high school students and street residents. Number three, better bike, bike and pedestrian experience. Number four, preserving the residential character of the neighborhood, which would be irreversibly and existentially damaged by the concrete monsters presented by either the partial underpass or the viaduct. This existential damage cannot be compared to the slight inconvenience for those in the Southgate area who would no longer have as quick an access to Alma as they currently have or to possible slight increase in traffic for those living close to Embarcadero. Number five, the Hexagon traffic study is quite clear that with mitigations, traffic at most intersections impacted by Churchill closure would be better. Only in two of the seven impacted intersections would it be worse, but only slightly so. Number six, unlike the alternatives, closure is in principle reversible. Number seven, finally, it's important to keep in mind that Palo Alto has more rail crossings per capita than any other city in the Bay Area and would remain so even with Churchill's closure. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Epstein, followed by David Kennedy, then James Silver. David Epstein, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for public comment.
Thank you. So I'm on the clover leaf that was discussed before on the Lincoln Emerson side of, of Alma and Embarcadero. I want to first say that it is very important and I don't like the idea that we're, or some people are suggesting that we don't need representation from all the communities. Representation is important and we were not represented. Southgate was not represented. Professorville was not represented and University South was not represented on the XCAP committee, which lends itself to believing that the closure is made for self-interest in reducing traffic on the old Palo Alto side while increasing traffic in all the other places or making it more inconvenient. I really am, am, I think it's incredulous to think that the committee has decided to close one of the of the crossings while punting on the rest of the crossings, which all have inter, are interrelated in where traffic goes and has decided that yes, mitigation is important. We should do it, but no specific things for mitigation were completed and the studies do indeed show are insufficient because of the impacted Embarcadero as it exists today and the changes that are coming with, with Castelaya being increased. The changes that will cause a pausde to have buses go around back onto Embarcadero instead of taking taking the, the Churchill crossing. So I just ask that the, that the council don't take any kind of instant idea of making something cheap that is very, very incomplete in its conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Kennedy, followed by James Silver, then Mary Sylvester. David, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes.
Yes, thank you. I'm David Kennedy, a longtime resident of Professorville. I live sort of close to Embarcadero, but fortunately I don't live on Embarcadero, but I'm familiar with many of the shortcomings of Embarcadero and particularly the underpass, but I really don't want to talk to that this evening. What I really wanted to, to note is that well, first of all, the XCAP, I think they've done a very diligent job. They worked hard. However, I think that unfortunately they were constrained by several criteria, either real or assumed. And one of those being probably most significant in my mind was an understanding or perception that property acquisition was not to be considered. And therefore they're pushed into looking at alternatives that I consider either being very complicated or very confused or compromised. I think that's one of the reasons couldn't come up with a recommendation for Charleston or Meadow and certainly it was one of the reasons for the recommendation of Churchill, the closure of Churchill. I would urge the council to step back a bit and say, let's look at what could be done with what I'll call modest underpasses at these crossings, which would be a lot. Which would be a lot more straightforward, it'd be less confusing to to users. I think There are some very clever ideas that were come up as came up as compromises, but God help the person that first time they encounter it. That's my encouragement is is look at how A simpler crossings can be planned and constructed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Silver, followed by Mary Sylvester and then Michael Price. James, if you can unmute yourself, you will have two minutes for public comment. James Silver, I do see that you're unmuted. Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm resident of South Palo Alto. And I would also like to thank the XCAP members for all of their efforts and for all of the Hours and hours of meetings and all of the work they put into this and their recommendations. I'm speaking in favor of the lowered options at the Charleston and Meadow intersections. I think the underpass is a particularly desirable option since it leaves the train essentially where it is currently And minimizes the environmental impacts that might be associated with the creeks and possibly having to move the creeks To accommodate the trench option. I'm glad to see that the additional studies they're recommending were related to groundwater and geological assessments of these options At XCAP is recommending. I I feel that the raised options will divide the community And create an unsightly, noisy blight on the city, and I think we should avoid those options if at all possible. I would like to thank their council for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Price, followed by a dial-in attendee ending with the number one six nine. Followed by Anke Faber. Michael, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes on the timer.
Thank you. I'm the originator of the partial underpass proposal for Churchill along with Michael Chacon, who helped develop the concept further by creating detailed renderings and videos to further visualize the idea. It appeared late in the XCAP process, but given the unhappiness with the Churchill alternatives being considered at the time, Council voted to allocate funds for its evaluation. We researched the design constraints and standards, talked to construction firms, investigated construction methods and generally prepared to contribute to fleshing out the proposal. We then participated in several discussions with the city's staff and engineers from AECOM. These discussions were fairly frustrating. AECOM's initial design included elements that greatly increased the footprint of the project, even though those elements were not present At the University Embarcadero Oregon underpasses. When challenged, we were told that these would be refined as the project progressed, but of course that can't happen if the project is rejected in part because of the consequences of these initial choices. Current design is more appropriate for a freeway than an intersection. We offered suggestions for improvements in designing construction, but these were tabled. Got the impression the team was looking for reasons to reject the idea as if the decision to close the intersection had been made long ago. There are legitimate concerns and uncertainties with the partial underpass proposal that can only be addressed following more complete investigations of all aspects of the project. Nevertheless, AECOM admits they found no showstopper issues. The aesthetics of the project received scant attention. Several alternative construction techniques were proposed but left unconsidered. As an engineer, I know the outcomes are very different if you approach a problem with the goal of finding a way to make it work Rather than looking for reasons why it might fail. The city will live with whatever is done at this intersection for the next one hundred years. Deciding to move forward without exploring alternatives more thoroughly would be a serious mistake. City council should postpone a decision about Churchill until a more complete analysis of all the issues and alternatives Can be performed so that we leave a legacy to the to the the future residents that they'll appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is the dial-in attendee with the number ending in one six nine, followed by Anke Faber, followed by Or sorry, excuse me. Yes, Anke Faber, followed by Penny Elson. If you can unmute yourself, the dial-in caller. If you press star six. Yes, thank you. I do see that you're unmuted. Are you able? Are you there? For now, we will move the dial-in caller Later for public comment. We will skip to Anke Faber. Anke Faber, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes on this timer.
Hello, hi. And thank you for having me here tonight. We moved to Palo Alto two months ago. So I'm hoping I can add a Fresh view to this situation. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I have four young sons who eventually will go to Paly. And we've been biking around the neighborhood quite a bit since we've moved here. And you know, it's it's been Really shocking to see how dangerous the Churchill crossing is. I cannot imagine letting my children do that on their own when they're, you know, once they are ready to go to Paly. And I do think that You know, we have a clear problem here and a clear solution. And I do think we should really focus on the preservation of human life here. Every accident on the Churchill crossing is one too many. We we've personally seen two accidents since we moved here. And we also noticed that there's a lot of very heavy construction traffic on Churchill. There's a sign on the corner of Churchill and Alma saying that Trucks over seven tons shouldn't be using Churchill. Yet I can I can tell that that is happening. I do support the closure of Churchill. I think we have You know, I think we should go for the cheapest and most efficient solution. We love Palo Alto. We've been welcomed so warmly by everyone here. It's a wonderful community. I think we should keep it safe. I think we should think of our children and not only mine, of course, but everyone's Children, God, God forbid, if it happens to one of your family members. And I really appreciate the work that the XCAP has done. I've done a lot of readings since we moved here and I can only admire The the passion and the work that you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, the dial-in caller ending in one six nine. We're going to try again. If you can unmute yourself. I see that you're unmuted. Are you there? Hello? Unfortunately, we're not able to hear you at this moment again. We will Move you again and skip to Carlin Otto. Carlin, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for a public comment.
The two raised options, the viaduct and the hybrid Will have the trains operating above the roofs Of the homes in the single-story overlay neighborhoods of Green Meadows and Charleston Meadows. And of course, they'll be higher than all single-story houses in Palo Alto. By themselves, the newly installed electrification poles that we're all looking at are creating this ugly wall. And these poles will be placed on top of the viaducts or the hybrid berm. These ra- these two raised solutions will create a huge Visual barrier stretching throughout the entire middle of our city. Raised structures push noise much wider and farther than below-grade or at-grade options. So trains on raised structures will affect many more people than the current train does. So if you build this, you're guaranteeing noise in Palo Alto for the next hundred years. Over time, Palo Alto is going to build more housing. The train noise will operate in a direct line With the housing that you try to build near the tracks for, you know, reasons of transportation. And so the noise will go directly into the second, third, and fourth story apartment buildings that you build near the tracks. Viaducts all over the world over time become dirty and ugly and poorly maintained. It will be no different in Palo Alto. Why build something that you know will become ugly and dirty With litter and garbage collecting on the wasted land under the structure? Please remove the viaduct and the hybrid options from consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriella Haekman, excuse me, and Followed by Mary Sylvester, followed by the dial-in speaker ending in one six nine. Gabriella, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for a public comment.
Hello, I'm Gabriella Haekman and I'm speaking both as a Southgate resident and as a high High school student at Palo Alto High School. I'd just like to say that I'm concerned about if the Churchill intersection is closed, about the emergency response time to my neighborhood and to my school. Based on recent events with gun violence at schools. It is a really real and scary possibility that there could be a school shooting at Paly. And if the emergency response is delayed even by several seconds or minutes, It could mean the deaths of several people. So I'm if Police cars and other first responders have the ability to access both sides of the school. It can make a huge difference. And also my neighborhood, I know that there have often been medical Medical emergencies. As somebody with health issues myself, Emergency response time is very important to me and you were talking about Saving lives at the intersection, but I believe that, you know, the intersection can be redesigned to be made safer, but you can't do anything to Make emergency response time shorter, even if you do mitigate for the traffic changes. It will still will take longer for ambulances to be able to get to my house, to be able to get to my school, and that makes me very concerned.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Sylvester, followed by our dial-in speaker ending in one six nine. Mary, if you can unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes for public comment.
Good evening, council. This is Mary Sylvester, a longtime Palo Alto resident. And I'm addressing my comments tonight to the Churchill closing or the proposed Churchill closing. I live two and a half blocks from the proposed closing equidistant between Churchill and Embarcadero. Thank you to the XCAP, particularly to Nadia Nyack for her longstanding leadership on this Very complex project. I'd also like to acknowledge what council has before it tonight and going forward. Both the complexity and the volume of input from the community. There are no easy solutions. People's quality of life is at issue. Environmental impacts and community-wide impacts are before you as well. My first comment is the conflict of interest that the XCAP Had before it. The committee composition had two neighbors on Churchill Road, the one hundred and two hundred block That were immediately impacted by either Closing of Churchill or going for an alternate solution. I would like to say that there were a number of people in north of Embarcadero As well as the those of us on feeder streets into Alma, Embarcadero and Churchill that were not included in the process And who will be significantly impacted by any decision. Traffic is being pushed from one neighborhood to another. The solution going forward should be to connect Palo Alto, not disconnect it In the spirit of our comp plan and it will eventually be a CEQA issue if disconnection continues. We have an equity issue before the community and therefore going forward in summation. We need better representation on the committee. That makes any final decision on Churchill closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is the dial-in caller ending in one six nine. If you can unmute yourself, we'll try again. I do see that you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we are able to.
Okay, my name is Terry Holsmurm and I wanted to to call in because I want the council to be aware, especially of pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine In the XCAP report. I think these are critical pages That outline some of the issues that remain With the analysis that has been done up to date. I think it clearly outlines that there are some deficiencies That need to be further examined. And I hope that they we will take the time, especially because this is a Multi-generational, as you well know, project. And this will last, as other people have said, over a hundred years. And the impacts of these events that we set in course in motion now Will have that impact. And especially, I'd like to bring in one Sentence from section four dot five dot three Under the partial underpass study. And that sentence is this. If with full participation from key stakeholders, an agreeable design could be achieved, The partial underpass could be a viable compromise. Again, that's the key word, a viable compromise addressing the issues of geographic equity. And I hope that you will take a look at that, particularly that passage And also the passage right below it, which mentions the irreversible nature of any decision that you make. And be and all one quick, other little quick little thing is that I do think more outreach needs to be done. I'm the vice president of our homeowners association In the Mayfield neighborhood, which is right next To the Caltrain station and we have not been approached at all in this process. And I hope that other neighborhood associations along the tracks are also well-represented In this process. So thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Neva Yarkin. Neva, I have just asked you to unmute yourself. You'll have two minutes on the timer.
My name is Neva Yarkin and I live on Churchill Avenue. Good evening, city council. I would like to make three short points to the council. Bike safety on Churchill has to change for the eight hundred and thirty-six bike riders In the morning and afternoon, traveling to Paly and returning home. This should have been done years ago. The cheapest option is closure of Churchill, which I support. A big thank you to all XCAP members for their time, effort And dedication to try and find solutions to this complicated, long process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our final speaker, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So I just want to say I appreciate all the comments and the engagement by so many people. I'm going to suggest we take a ten-minute break. Then we come back for council questions and discussion. So seven, so we'll come back at eight o'clock or see you guys then.
I thought we were going to get entertained by the music.
I'll have to mute and unmute. Sorry about that. All right, so I think we're ready to resume. I do want to clarify that tonight's a study session to accept the XCAP report. We're not making any decisions tonight. I think we should proceed to ask questions, XCAP members, staff, AECOM, you know, all the work that's been done since October of 2019. And I'd suggest we do probably at least one round of just questions. So, why don't we start there? Technical questions, any kinds of questions? Yes, thank you, Councilmember.
Everybody's so shy. Well, I just want to start off by adding my gratitude to the XCAP for all the work that they did and all the meetings that they sat through, the many, many days. I sat through some of them, and the discussions were quite robust. And so, thank you, Nadia, and to everybody else for this report. A lot of it was technical, too. I do want to say sorry to some of the commenters who had come on and felt that they were not represented, and I can see why. So, I do want to acknowledge that, and that I did hear you. I do have one question, just to start off with. I think there was the, I believe it was Terry Holzmer, who asked the question to focus on page 68 and 69 of this report, and in particular, the quote that he read, "If with full participation with key stakeholders and agreeable design could be achieved," could perhaps, Ms. Nyack, could you comment on that?
Sure. Thankfully, I've got the report here. So, Mr. Holzmer was discussing the minority position. So, there was three members of XCAP who voted differently from the majority. And that section talks about the reason why we voted separate from our colleagues. There were essentially four reasons that we listed. The first was that we thought that, while there had been a lot of traffic studies completed, it wasn't sufficient. And our colleagues agreed with us in that they have the same suggestions for how to improve the future study, but they still felt it was compelling enough to vote for the closure of Churchill. The second main concern that it was myself, Keith Rektal, and Phil Burton had was about the Embarcadero Bridge situation, which, again, we acknowledged in our presentation that the majority also agreed with us that it's something that needs to be considered, but it wasn't a showstopper for them. The third part was really that we felt that the partial underpass hadn't gotten a fair shake, much like the underpass for South Palo Alto. It just didn't get enough iteration because of kind of when it came up in the process and what happened with COVID. It certainly got a lot of design, but similar to the underpass alternative for South Palo Alto, there are more significant road and pedestrian considerations that need to be looked at there. And so, we just felt like we weren't comfortable with the fact that traffic gets diverted elsewhere, and we thought that that brought up an equity issue. And we really thought that the partial underpass was a good way to kind of come up with something that, if you could figure out a design that worked, and we acknowledge that it has its flaws, but it could really could produce something that might be seen as a compromise. And last is, and this is, well, I'll differ a little bit with what Larry said, there hasn't, the history of the California Public Utilities Commission, and before that, the Railroad Agency that existed, they don't reopen closures. When you've closed a crossing, you don't really get to do one again. And so, of course, anything is irreversible. If you built a viaduct, it would be irreversible. But the point being that you're closing an east-west connector. And so, again, the minority felt that just, we really need to consider what happens at Embarcadero Bridge, what happens at Palo Alto Avenue, and kind of looking at this as a system. And we just, we couldn't get there. It wasn't necessarily fully about the partial underpass, that that was necessarily a preferred alternative. It was just sort of the combination of things.
And thank you for that. And naturally, you know, the ripple effects was brought up. And so, I could see, I mean, looking at that with the closure that is being proposed, the ripple effects are there also. There's both sides ripple effects, right? So, I would think that we would want to ensure placing other east-west connections before we completely eliminate this one in particular. So, I think it's too soon to decide on that. Then, I would like to find out from staff, how come, you know, the drawings for the underpass, especially in the southern side, in the South Palo Alto, it didn't seem to come to the design that was produced that was similar to what the drawings that was provided by hand by, I think, Ms. Alexis, was it? So, I don't think it's as accurate, the design. Can you kind of help me understand why that wasn't done to her specification or her engaged in the entire process of designing the southern part of the underpass? And I know my time is up.
Nadia, before you go to that, could I respond also to the first part, since there was a difference between the majority and minority?
Yeah, go ahead, Larry.
Thank you. The majority of the committee saw things differently than what Nadia just described, though we agree in part. And actually, the minority agrees as well. I teased her several times and said the vote wasn't really 6-3, it was 7.4 to 1.6, because she and her colleagues on the minority were very close to acknowledging that the partial underpass idea doesn't look like it's feasible. And the people on the majority felt more strongly that it's not, and that tweaking it doesn't look like it's a good expenditure of public funds. And I think there really is a distinction between the citizen-generated idea in the north, the partial underpass, and the one in the south. The one in the north, Churchill, really had much more time devoted to it and designed iterations than we saw at Charleston and Meadow. So, I think there are really distinctions there, and that I don't think that the citizen who referred to those pages really has made a persuasive argument, but that's for you all to decide.
And then, Nadia, could you go ahead and answer Councilmember Ku's question about the difference in the south underpass?
Sure. I think, to be fair, the proposal, as it was originally presented to Council, was very high level. So, there was a drawing for Charleston. It was sort of the same concept for Meadow, but there wasn't a drawing that accompanied. I would let AECOM answer why they decided to change the design alternative, because I know that they made some decisions, and they were trying to optimize for some turning movements. So, I think actually, that question was directed towards staff or AECOM.
Yeah, thanks. I'll start, and perhaps AECOM wants to chime in, but just as Nadia said, you know, the initial proposal was highly conceptual, and so, we're trying to take, you know, highly conceptual design and turn it into something that's, you know, functions within our transportation network, so it, you know, meets all of our, you know, necessary design elements and also functions. And there was collaboration with the person that created those designs, which I just want to note was Elizabeth Alexis. So, there was work with her and also some members of the XCAP and Technical, I can't remember what we called it, what was it, Nadia, Technical something?
Technical Advisory Committee, TAC.
That's right, Technical Advisory Committee, where we worked on creating designs that would actually function in a real environment. I'm not sure if AECOM has much to add to that.
Well, thank you. I will come back to the second round.
Okay, Councilmember Philson.
Thank you. So, first of all, to Nadia and Larry and the whole group, you know, thank you very, very much for what you've done. I mean, this is really important stuff, and you folks have carried a huge amount of load on this. So, much, much appreciated. Thank you for all. Thank you for all the work that you've done so far. Couple of questions. So, so let me make sure I understand. So for the for the XCAP group, so you felt that the south underpass, the Charleston underpass, was promising enough as an option that it's worth continuing to flush out?
Yes, most specifically because it's the only one where four tracks are not impacted if we do need four tracks there.
Ah, okay. So let me ask another question about the the south. So there was, you folks weren't able to reach a consensus or even a majority on on any one of the options, right? If if land acquisition were not a factor, you think there would have been a majority?
I can't say that we we could come to that conclusion. I think everybody recognized that the, because we all agreed that the underpass alternative should be iterated further, one of the hopes of the iteration was that you would actually remove the the majority of the eminent domain issues. And so I think it would be unfair for me to speculate.
Okay, okay. Then let me ask a question about. I think you guys have answered this, but I want to make sure that I understand. So what was the minority case against the Churchill closing? Was it, I think that Lydia said that is that the minority wasn't felt it was premature to give up on the on the underpass. Is that, is that, was that the dissent?
That wasn't the full dissent. So we did feel like that alternative needed more work. And I will disagree slightly with Larry in that we did come up with a list of things that could make it better if there was, if we could go and iterate further. But the majority, the minority's main concerns were really about the fact that the traffic study didn't seem to address the entire network. It addressed certain particular intersections that were highlighted as part of what happens if you close Churchill. But it didn't really explain what the network effects were going to be. This is actually a comment that Billy Riggs made really early on when he was still on XCAP. And then second is, we were sort of focused also on the Embarcadero grade separation and Palo Alto Avenue separation. And, you know, if you make decisions in the north that create more east-west and better connections onto Alma, you would actually relieve enough pressure that the closure of Churchill may not be so significant. But we couldn't get comfortable with the work we'd done to date. And knowing that we were told not to discuss Palo Alto Avenue and then not really understanding what the long-term plan was for Embarcadero, we just couldn't get there. So it wasn't a fully like the underpass is the answer. It was sort of a combination of things. And I will say there was a lot of concern about the equity issue of basically solving one group's problems by pushing the traffic elsewhere.
Okay, so it was more a question of, you know, we're not prepared to make any recommendation as opposed to six wanted this option and three wanted that option?
Yeah, that we thought it deserved enough work to cut off an east-west arterial was significant enough that, you know, we might get there eventually, but we're just, we were just not there yet with the information we had at that moment.
Okay. And then let me ask a question. Thanks. And one more question, let me ask one of staff, which you folks said once Caltrain hits capacity, electrified Caltrain hits capacity, then the gates will be down 15 minutes in each hour. Is that during rush hours?
Sorry, it's 15% of the time during.
15% of the time.
Actually, nine minutes during the peak hour.
Yeah, nine minutes during the peak hours. And how many hours each day is qualified for that?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information right offhand. I'm not sure if AECOM has that. I would not expect that they do.
So the real impact of nine minutes in one hour has to do with the, you know, the impact on cross traffic is going to be the dominant one. So I assume Charleston is the most traffic during the day of the of the grade intersections?
Of the ones that we're talking about, yes.
Yeah. Which one is number two?
Oh, boy, I'd have to look at the the traffic study. I don't remember off the top of my head. But I did want to say that there is not a linear connection between adding trains and the amount of delay. So the graphic that Philip showed in his presentation only went to 12 trains. But prior to the pandemic, Caltrain was talking about once they electrified, they could go up to 16 trains. And so I just want to make that point. And I do also want to say that under CEQA, Caltrain has the right to operate more trains, even if the cars have to wait. That is a big change in CEQA that happened in the last 10 years and significantly impacts these decisions.
I understand, but but, you know, one school of thought is we prioritize, you know, which intersections to focus on first and so forth is I assume that one of the major factors is, okay, how much traffic on this one versus how much traffic on that one?
Meadow and Charleston.
Is that a reasonable assumption?
Meadow and Charleston are so close that you have to, whatever you do to one, you have to do to the other for the most part. So so you don't really have a choice to do one first and then the other. I think the only.
Unless you did, unless you did the hybrids or the underpasses.
Right, a hybrid and an underpass is the only combination, I believe, where that's possible.
Yeah, I'd be curious which one's number two. Thank you.
Is your question which crossing has the most traffic?
So Charleston, I assume, has the most traffic. I'm curious which one is the second most?
I think page seven of the report, it's actually Palo Alto Avenue is the most traffic. It's more than Charleston.
Yeah, I sort of suspected that, actually. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm having some spotty internet, so if I go out or pause, my apologies. First, just want to, like everyone, thank Nadia, Larry, the entire XCAP group for this work. I mean, this is just an incredible report, so detailed, you're near 50 meetings and just countless hours. You all deserve like an honorary doctorate for this, for this work. I mean, it's just, it's so incredible and so helpful. So thank you very much for that. And and as well, also just thanks to the community as well. I mean, all of these, all of these surveys that have been put out and just community time spent on the advocacy and development of alternative plans as well. I mean, this is just one of the things that makes Palo Alto such an incredible community, to have all of these rich resources within our own, within our own residents to be able to make these projects better. So kudos to all of you as well. I'll start my, I'll start my questions on Churchill Crossing. So my, my understanding, right, was, so the majority, the majority is supporting the closure, six votes. But the original, the original XCAP was 14 members.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the six of that original 14, but at the time that this vote was taken, it was, it was nine members, six out of the nine?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. One thing, if I would imagine that this was discussed thoroughly, Nadia, I'm trying to understand how the closure of the Churchill Crossing is really consistent with the comp plan that states that Caltrain grade separations will be prioritized to improve east-west connections for autos, transit, pedestrians, bicyclists, and to reduce traffic congestion. All right, this closure kind of seems to frustrate those goals rather than complement them. Could you discuss kind of what the, what the analysis and the discussion was within XCAP on that?
Sure, I can try and then I can let Larry chime in as well if I don't get it right. But I, I mean, I would say that we looked at the council criteria. We also looked at as much policy stuff as we could. Ultimately, I think the votes represent what the committee thought based on how they were sort of applying things. I can't say that we necessarily said, oh, well, this is the first criteria, and so this is what we're doing. And part of that, I will say, is that if you look at the original criteria, it did have a tier one, tier two, tier three. But there was a lot of discussion about changing that criteria and it sort of never just got to council. And so I think there was a tacit understanding that the, it wasn't necessarily ordered in the way the council meant it to be. And so we just sort of looked at it in all ways. You know, I will also say that there was a subset of the majority, and I'll let Larry speak to that. But it's really about it's the lowest cost alternative. And so Larry, do you want to add to that?
Well, a couple of different thoughts on that. One is that the council criteria taken from the comp plan and all that are in some ways inconsistent with each other. So you have to start with that as to that you're not going to be able to achieve all of those goals. And we get back next to the idea that there is no perfect alternative here. There's no sense that people are ever going to come to Palo Alto. And so you've got a great separate grade separation there. It's not going to be a tourist attraction. Whatever the council ultimately decides, or it could be a other authority decides for us, that it's not going to be, it's not going to be something that everybody's excited about. So that being said, we come back to what I think the majority felt was. You have several criteria that really spoke to the idea that closing Churchill is going to be the best alternative. One is the cost. Clearly, it's going to be the lowest cost alternative, no matter how much tweaking you do on anything else. Two, the aesthetics. The, there's no question that if you, even if you went with the the first that the viaduct would be really a dominant feature of the neighborhood and not one that people would regard as pleasant. Two, that the partial underpass is not anything that's beautiful either. Maybe it's not as bad aesthetically as the partial underpass, but it's still, I mean, as the viaduct, but it's not going to be something that Palo Alto is going to be proud of. So those are the two, first two drivers that led the majority to say Churchill closing is the best alternative. Also in there is that it would produce a very improved bicycle pedestrian crossing through the alternative number two to the mitigations. That is, the bike pit tunnel that would run under Churchill and the railroad, under Alma and the railroad tracks. I think that would be a plus for the community. Fourthly, that it's the safest alternative, closing. Several people from the community have testified as to what a challenge it is to cross with small children or even teenagers at the Churchill Crossing. And this would eliminate that problem, that is, the closing would. So I think all those factors were part of, were the reasoning why the majority felt that we should move forward at this time, making a decision that the preferred alternative for Palo Alto is to close Churchill.
Thanks, Larry. And I mean, I agree, no one's going to come to Palo Alto for these great separations. I think our true goal should be people coming through Palo Alto don't even recognize these great separations.
Good way of saying it.
Yeah. One thing I was still a little confused by the design. So if the partial underpass option is selected for Churchill, would it still, would we still require the traffic lights at Oregon Expressway in Alma, Kingsley in Alma, and Embarcadero and Alma?
They weren't specifically required by the, so the mitigations that go with the closure are needed because of the diversion of traffic. If you have the partial underpass, the Hexagon did not have any specific traffic mitigation or traffic mitigations that would be needed because it doesn't divert traffic in that way. I will say that generally, the XCAP thought that all of the mitigations or many of the mitigations at the main intersections, particularly El Camino and Embarcadero, El Camino and Page Mill, the Clover Leafs of the Oregon Expressway at Alma, are all projects that we would welcome today. But as it turns out, they also have been in the comp plan and other plans for, it's on the wish list for years, right? So it happens to fall under mitigations we need, but it's also been something that we've wanted anyway, not the least of which is stuff that we probably needed if the Stanford GUP had gone through.
Okay, great. Thank you. I see my time's up.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor DuBois. Could I just ask a process question? I'm hearing we're going to have one meeting. I'm hearing we're going to have two meetings. Should we be discussing and having detailed questions about these different alternatives?
Yeah, that's a great question. I was going to make a comment when it got to me. But yeah, so again, I think we're definitely going to have another meeting where we can go into a lot more details, kind of was laid out in the agenda. We have to decide how long we want to go tonight. Again, I think we should kind of view this as accepting the report and asking, you know, a lot of questions about the conclusions. And then again, I think throughout the year, we should have, you know, more detailed meetings about each crossing itself, right? We're not, we're not trying to do it all tonight.
Great, okay, wonderful. Well, then I'll keep my questions to the broader ones and reserve the specific ones for later. I appreciate that clarification. All right. As, as Ms. Nyack said, I would be remiss if I didn't start with, you know, the deep appreciation I have. And thank you, Ms. Nyack, for reading the name of each of the people. I was going to do that if that hadn't already happened. I will go ahead and add the names of the people who started this process. And just because they weren't here with us at the finish line, Adina Levin, Judy Kleinberg, Megan Kahn, Patricia Lau, Barbara Best, and Billy Riggs. So just want to get their names right into the record. Truly, when we began this, we thought at council, we didn't have enough time to do this project justice. And that was before COVID. We could never be where we are today with the confidence that I know I have in the work that's been done without your, your gifts of time and commitment. And speaking, you know, just personally, I don't know that very many people in Palo Alto will thank you if they disagree with you or will wish you'd done more. It's just part of the territory, but I am deeply grateful. And I want to add that I think Ms. Nyack and Mr. Klein have been models of how to disagree cordially. And I don't think that should go unnoticed. So sorry to use my question time at the beginning for that, but truly, it's been a real service to the community and I'm grateful. All right, high-level questions then. Does, does the XCAP feel that the outlines of why we need to do this are clear to the community, right? That we did a little bit of this tonight, but like the traffic delays, the climate goals, the safety. Does XCAP, you know, Nadia and Larry, do you believe that that these things have really been articulated well enough to the community?
So I will say, no, I'm getting texts from XCAP members saying, no. So there's no with exclamation points.
Okay.
But I would like to acknowledge that I started with this in 2009 when I focused on the High Speed Rail project. And my experience has been very broadly and generally speaking, that the community's general understanding of rail has changed. When High Speed Rail came in 2009, there was a very quick anti-all-trains community response out of the anger. And it took years of advocacy, frankly, by groups like Friends of Caltrain and others to distinguish for the community the role that Caltrain plays in really helping with our local traffic and our greenhouse gas emissions and the difference of the High Speed Rail project and how that was separate. And I feel like the conversation from that point has morphed into, okay, Caltrain matters. And if Caltrain matters, what's up with grade separations? And oh, great, okay, we really need grade separations because of this. And over time, you know, you still get lots of folks who hold out hope for the tunnel. But it's becoming more and more of a sophisticated conversation. I don't think everybody's there. I don't think if you did a poll of Palo Alto, you would get necessarily, you know, with respect to my citizens who tried to poll the community. I'm not sure if you got every resident what they would say. So I think the work needs to continue and I think it needs to continue for a very basic reason. This is going to take 10, 20, hopefully not 30 years to do all this stuff. There will be more bond measures and tax measures and funding measures and changes in our political environment. And we need to have a sustained understanding that safety is the number one goal and that these traffic reductions are number one goal.
That's really helpful. Thank you. Yeah.
Allison, if I think I agree with everything Nadia just said, but I would add this as well. There were one or two speakers who said, oh, in effect, we don't need this, that we ought to just, maybe you're referring to that.
I'm just asking more generally.
Yeah, okay. But I think that the answer to, an additional answer to why we need grade separations is that the, if, when you have the increased number of trains due to electrification, the traffic is going to be such that the, you're going to have, if you didn't have grade steps, you'd have what the traffic engineers have. It's this cutesy phrase, incurable queues. And I asked at one of the meetings, what are we talking about there? And how long they're talking then about traffic snarls and backups of 10 or 15 minutes? And I said, well, what happens if you go beyond or get to that point? And they said, but you have a rate, you have rage incidents. The people just get so frustrated that they, that just can't stand it. So there is a very practical reason why we need to move forward. That is that the grade separations are necessary and that what's the famous line from the book? Along the lines of if you like the status quo, you have to change.
All right, thanks. That's the end of my first round.
Vice Mayor Burt.
Yeah, thank you. So first, some questions on Churchill. Going back to when the initial alternatives for Churchill were proposed in 2017, I think. And if I remember correctly, it was perhaps 2018 that the council had a lot of blowback from the community, I think rightly, against the, the hybrid option that was proposed, which would have I think done, had, was perceived to have two significant negative implications. One was significant property acquisition or takings. And the other was traffic inducement, turning Churchill into a more attractive and therefore higher volume thoroughfare for cars going from Embarcadero to El Camino. The staff or anyone from X cap, is that a correct characterization of why the hybrid was eliminated early on?
I may predate both the city manager and the, the chief transportation officer on that issue. So I think I'll take a first stab, but certainly staff, I'll leave it to you to add to that. But yes, the initial, the property takings for the hybrid were significant. Actually, it was, it was, it was a straight underpass that Mont McDonald looked at. And it had a lot of property acquisition, particularly on the east side of the tracks, because there's actually a lot of flag lots in old Palo Alto and it would have cut off a lot of those flag lots. I think the hybrid had somewhat similar and it was therefore removed. And yes, you're correct that there was, it was going to be a very efficient intersection. But I will say that part of that was due to the early design, sort of matching the same amount of turn lanes that we have today, which wouldn't necessarily be how you did it. I'll also say that there was never a proper traffic study at that point to kind of think about how you might change things. I will say that I don't remember when the first consultants that, the first traffic consultant, the very first one that we had. But one of the, one of their findings in the beginning was that if you closed Churchill, there was no impact. And so thankfully, we changed traffic consultants and we got a better answer, which we now understand to be true.
I, my recollection too is that the neighbors on Churchill and Southgate rightly were rebellious against that alternative. And then before that was eliminated, they kind of went with an opposite alternative, which is close the thing altogether. And, and I, I appreciate that if I was in their shoes and the option was a taking of a home and, and a big traffic impact versus closing it, I might be an advocate for the closure. But it, it seemed to be that the closure option came to the forefront in part as a reaction against this other alternative, and it went the other extreme. So it begs then, well, I don't know if it begs, a second question that I have is there was a mention that in the town hall, there may have been a question on a, a no build option, which I wouldn't foresee as a long-term solution, but it may be a significant medium-term solution coupled with mitigations of both the dedicated bike and pedestrian crossings along with Embarcadero mitigation. So was that one of the options that AECOM or staff looked at? And have they looked at how long in Caltrain's ultimate capacity increase scenarios? How far out might that alternative meet our needs? And might not Churchill be the last location that we actually have to come to a clear decision on for that reason?
Thank you. So I'll try and speak to that. Unless AECOM has some other information, there was not a no build alternative that was presented at the town hall or otherwise. The no build scenario is something that would be evaluated under environmental studies for any alternative that's selected. So that's something that would be contemplated typically at that time when an environmental process is going on.
Okay. And I wasn't suggesting that we would have a do nothing scenario. But I am intrigued by the possibility of what, what the X cap has largely agreed upon on a lot of the mitigations of needing a dedicated separated one or more bike and pedestrian crossings combined with improvements at Embarcadero. And what would that do? But I've used up my first go around, so I'll leave that lingering.
Councilmember Tsakaka.
I'd just like to also add my thanks to the X cap team. It's, it looks like a tremendous amount of work. I remember what we did on the I break many years ago. And this seems like it was that plus more. So tremendous work. So thank you guys for doing that and kind of applying to all of us. I have a few questions for you guys. First of which is, as you were kind of deliberating the different choices, how much was funding a constraint at the time when you guys were discussing it? Was this like a, was this like a pretty major constraint or was this something that wasn't, wasn't considered very much?
We were specifically directed not to consider funding by council.
And then for staff, well, the only reason why I ask this is because I saw on the slide that said that quite the tunnel option was, was eliminated because of the cost, the cost is real high. And that's why I was wondering how much was cost factored in to, maybe I should rephrase the question. How much was cost a factor in the decision rather than funding? So maybe would that be the same answer you just had or would it be different?
I think, I think once we were north of a billion dollars, just looking at the South Palo Alto tunnels and just for the two crossings, knowing we had two more, the, the group and the environmental impacts associated with it, that was sort of a deal killer. I'll also say that the amount of eminent domain that was required, you know, if you recall, the citywide tunnel was removed partly because of the eminent domain that was required just to build the two tracks. And then you have the added thing that Caltrain is now talking about four tracks for South Palo Alto. So I, I can't, I think we all agreed that north of a billion for the two south crossings was just more than we expected any, even if we were imagining that a grade separation ferry was going to come down at some point from the federal government, that it probably wasn't going to cover that nut.
Okay. So cost was a factor, but only on a gross level. And of course, you guys didn't think about funding, so that makes sense. Okay, thank you. And then kind of a question for staff, you know, there's, there's a ton of federal dollars floating around right now, federal stimulus dollars. And I'm just wondering how much of any of that is available for our great separations?
I certainly wouldn't be the definitive on this. Information I saw suggested there, the federal dollars, at least as currently programmed, were focused on expenditure within the next couple of years. And given that we would be not close to construction, so not really in a position to take advantage of that.
And if I, if I can add on to that, I think that's really typically, we could start competing for most of the type of federal funding and certainly will, will be a bit behind for the stimulus likely. But other federal funding sources have come and gone. And, you know, we have like other federal funds such as infra, which is a federal funding source that we could potentially use for infrastructure project like this. But it really would be available to us after we have a project defined.
So let's just say that the X cap recommendation was adopted. How, how would we fund something like this? The staff know?
I could take a stab at that. Well, there's some discussion that's going on in the background. And as you're probably aware, we have the measure B that was approved in 2016, which we are one of eight grade crossings in Santa Clara County that is set to slated to receive funding from that program. And we're currently having discussions in the background and with VTA about how that pool of, of money will be slotted to the different cities jurisdictions, the three cities and the eight different crossings. So that, that's one potential start. The other thing is taking that money and leveraging it with other types of monies. So as an example, as you just discussed, federal funds would be a source that we really want to be seeking, you know, to, to leverage moving forward the project.
Speaking of VTA, did, it was, at one point VTA was looking to perhaps use the money for, for Bart. Is that still happening? Is that kind of been stopped, you know?
Yeah. So that's a good question. There was originally a plan for the measure B expenditures that seemed to invest more heavily in Bart than the other measure B funding programs initially, but that is no longer the proposal that's moving forward.
Okay. Okay, great. I have a little time here, a quick question, which is, you know, Michael Price talked about the Churchill part and that there's a freeway like exits or exit requirements. Can staff just talk about that in terms of, I mean, a freeway actually, cars are going really fast, much faster than I think they would on Alma. How, how much of that is, I, I heard that statement, it's kind of interesting. How much of that is, well, I guess I'd like to hear staff's perspective on that comment. Were we, were we like overdesigning this for what it really is or was it?
Yeah. So I, I'm not, I'm not sure I totally follow the question.
Price, one of the public speakers, I think he was the one who did the partial, okay. And he mentioned that the design constraints were overly aggressive in terms of trying to, I think his, I think his words were freeway like ramps or something, something to that extent, right? So, so basically much bigger ramps or higher radius ramps than, than are normal. And that's more in the domain, more issues and more feasible becomes. And I just, you know, I'm curious to know your perspective.
Yeah. So I think actually I'd really like AECOM to speak up to this, but just to give you the initial kind of, the city approach is that we're trying to design these roads and these different interchanges and all these things to operate under normal conditions. And at a conceptual level, you could say it's conservative, but from a city approach, I would not say it's conservative. I'd say it's trying to design within realistic operational situations. And I'm pretty sure that AECOM would echo that. Just to give kind of a note, some of the, you know, recommendations that were received included like reducing lane width to smaller than we can handle, noting that we need to accommodate like a fire engine or something like that. We can't preclude, you know, our emergency vehicles from having access or for them being able to assist others. We also, you know, can't design something say at a lower speed limit without keeping in mind that somebody might not actually adhere to that lower speed limit. So we can't design something for like 15 miles per hour without considering that somebody might actually go 25 miles per hour. So those are just some of the considerations that we need to keep in mind when we design something.
Yeah, this is for me calm. And I would just add to that, that, you know, you know, we based our design. It's not based on freeway design standards, I can assure you. It's based on local street standards that we can develop geometry that we know that will be safe for the user and that meets those, those guidelines and standards that meet our standard of road design. So usually based on safety, lane widths and, you know, the design speed that we're building the facility for.
Thank you. So first, I want to add my thanks to everybody else's. Thank you to X cap for, for your work and the report. I think the report itself is immensely valuable. You really have captured several years of work, not only by the X cap itself, but all the past rail committees, AECOM, the community feedback. I think it's just a great record of getting to where we are to this point. So just, we'll start with some questions. So high speed rail, it was, it was presented as a two-track system back in 2011, right?
No, the four-track system.
Okay. I mean, but the four tracks were.
Sorry, four-track system originally in 2008. And when the blended system was approved, they would, it was a primarily two-track system with the understanding there would be passing tracks.
Correct. That's what I was talking about. The two-track system was what got approved. And wasn't the EIR done with that assumption as well, the two tracks with, with passing sections?
Yes, but I can't say that they had had enough operate, inner operability design work completed. At that time, they weren't even sure they were getting electrification completed, right? So they couldn't confirm what even what train cars they had and even think about operability. So that's where the fight still is.
Okay. And it's, yeah. So I guess when did, when did four track become an issue? And why wasn't four track part of AECOM's analysis?
Not sure if I'm the right person to speak to this, but I'll just mention that the four tracking issue at least came to my, my attention when Caltrain let us know that, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the date, but I'm guessing this was around November of 2020, that Caltrain informed us that any design that we had should not preclude the possibility of four tracks.
Actually, I think that was 2019, if I'm recalling correctly, just prior to COVID kicking in.
Yeah, they took the official vote on the rail corridor use policy in February of 2020. And they came and told us at a May meeting of 2020. But I remember that we were all caught off guard in May, that it had happened in February. And of course, we were all dealing with COVID. So I think the, the, the question was, Tom, between high speed rail and Caltrain, they, they, that was sort of still up in the air of what it was really needed. And it was the, the, the business plans work that made it clear that the passing tracks are really only needed for if high speed rail comes.
I'm just concerned, we spent a ton of money. We've invited Caltrain to our meetings. They've come and presented to us 2017, 2018. We've had AECOM doing all this work. Just kind of pisses me off, actually. I mean, feels like they changed the rules well down the road. And again, you know, we've, we've had AECOM doing all this work and these community meetings. You know, I just would have appreciated if we had gotten a heads up much, much sooner. And you're saying there's still a possibility, but it's going to take years, I guess, if high speed rail, you know, ends and doesn't get here, we could potentially stick with two tracks. But we're not going to know that for some time, it sounds like. Is that correct?
I, I think what, what Caltrain has said is that our designs can't preclude the possibility of four tracks. So you could build a two-track hybrid or a two-track viaduct. And the, the, the thing that I think is difficult is that they're putting the onus on us to show that you could eventually fit a four-track viaduct. But at the same time, they've told high speed rail, hey, if, if passing tracks are coming, you guys need to pay for the design. So why would Palo Alto for free show them what a four-track viaduct might look like just because we want a two-track viaduct? So I think that's part of the political Gordian knot that you guys are going to have to work on. I think the second piece, which Larry, I'm sure will, will reiterate, is that there's a very real question of high speed rail survives. And I, you know, I, I'd be the first to say, I, I don't know how long it's going to take for them to get here. But if I put on my train advocacy only hat as a member of Friends of Caltrain, it is very, very, very unlikely that any train company who has right of way in a very expensive area is going to give any of it up. And so even though they may not ever come, you know, in order for Caltrain and high speed rail to continue to work under the memorandum of understanding, and frankly, in order to keep the door open for Caltrain to still be able to accept high speed rail money, if high speed rail dies, they can't really violate that memorandum. So they have to show good intent that they're trying to make it so that they can come to the corridor. And that's another political fight, but that's the reality of the situation, I think.
So I got to one question, but just to follow up. Again, there was an EIR done by high speed rail. So is that EIR going to change or be invalid because of this switch into where the four tracks are or does it just make it easier for them?
Well, high speed rail's EIR shows that they don't need passing tracks because they say Caltrain has to wait. And Caltrain has responded back and said, no, we're not going to wait. And so honestly, until there's a final EIR that comes out and that gets responded to, I don't, there is no answer. And I would say honestly, it sort of depends on the legislature because right now, high speed rail is going to beg to the legislature for more money. And you have a new administration that's very friendly to high speed rail. That could potentially keep the dream alive for much longer, which complicates frankly, our situation.
Okay.
And I would note that the city did comment on the high speed rail EIR. The, I think we may not have said preposterousness of ignoring the issue, but nonetheless, calling attention to that problem.
Right. I think we also commented on, you know, the passing truck sections at that time were in other places, right? Yes. Okay. Okay. Let's go to a second round. I think Councilmember Q had her hand up first.
Thank you. I, I wanted to also add to the record and I want to thank Councilmember Cormac for bringing forth all the names of former X cap members. But I wanted to make sure that we also acknowledge. Former XCAP members, but I wanted to make sure that we also acknowledge. Michael Price, Michael Chacon, as well as Elizabeth Alexis, you know, I mean, we have. It's amazing that we have such talented community members. And, you know, we have an engineer, we have an architect, we have a mathematician who have contributed all these designs. And I think that we should take that pretty seriously. Their contributions. And so I hope moving forward that we do. We do earnestly look at these designs and consider them. Now, it brings me back to the CSS process and I CSS context sensitive solutions. I got it right, right? Anyways, so if we had gotten to that earlier, we could be beyond this process right now, moving on to something else, but. It's water under the bridge. So I wanted to ask also. You know, what the mayor said about, you know, not knowing about. The two track, four track blended, you know, all of that. Then added on top of it is the construction methodology, which is about, you know. The vertical curve, the great degrees. When can we actually get an answer out of either Caltrain or Union Pacific? I mean, is there an answer that they have provided so that we're not limited with our designs? And. And we can actually have a definitive answer about. Whether we can go trench, whether we can do. Whatever else there is.
Nadia, can I try a political answer?
Of course.
It's when you, as a council member, in conjunction with other council members exert enough pressure on Caltrain or the state legislature to get them to move. This is a political issue. Caltrain is a political body that has. Keeps coming back to us, measure RRR, for example. So they're going to want some more support. You have to be able to, you as our representative have to be lobbying with them, in effect, saying. You want our support? We need your, some decisions from you.
Thank you for the guidance. And I know that we have, we have the vice mayor.
I think it's a long time history of Palo Alto to not engage so much in that type of work. And I think that you're really going to have to.
I agree. And I know that we have Vice Mayor Burt over at the LPMG and he's going to be. Asking the questions and making the relationships to get partnerships and working on this.
I'm sorry, Lydia, I also wanted to say that you also have the opportunity through the, through the grade quarter study that's coming. It just may not be fast enough. But if I can throw one moment of accolade, when I first started with High Speed Rail. Pat, Vice Mayor Pat Burt and Larry were actually both on council together. And they, the reason I got to know them was because they were among the most engaged in terms of meeting with High Speed Rail. And meeting with mayors of other cities and meeting with Caltrain. And so I really hope that we can rekindle that spirit. Because I do think it's going to take a lot of political pressure and I will say that you have a lot of allies. There are a lot of cities that now have done enough environmental work, like Redwood City, like Burlingame, like Mountain View, like Menlo Park. Where they're realizing that these small details are really making these projects incredibly expensive. And you're talking about three freight trains a day. You know, the obvious question is, could we strike some sort of deal where we're not spending, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars extra? For, you know, where we could loosen some design constraints and have some flexibility there. But the official process, I think AECOM can speak to is, we'd have to apply with our project. I see Philip's finger up, so I'm going to stop talking about him.
No, that's exactly what I was going to speak to is, is they currently have design criteria. So what we'd be asking for is exemptions to their design criteria. And so just noting that I think what Caltrain would like us to do is send them a request for an exemption to the design criteria. And then they're going to have engineers. Determine whether that's feasible and then they're going to send us a bill. And that's the process that they've set out for us. So I think it's actually a question of, you know, where in the process do we ask for that design criteria? And, you know, weighing whether we believe that. It's the type of thing that they're going to allow us to build.
Okay, and so have, okay, thank you. My time is up. Thank you, Larry and Nadia.
Again, I'm going by the order of saw hands, Councilmember Phil Sis, and then Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah, thanks. One more question. Do I understand that? For the, again, for the Churchill crossing, right? That a secondary bike tunnel is actually going to be needed under all the options under consideration, including the closure option?
Well, our recommendation is, you will like it, you will want it for mitigation reasons. I mean, essentially, if you are building a viaduct at Churchill, you're going to want another place to cross while it's under construction. If you're building a partial underpass, you're going to need one while it's under construction. And even at the closure, in order to build the bike ped tunnel at Churchill itself, you need to first close, which means you canceled out the tunnel. And so what we did was cull through the comprehensive plan and the bike plan to identify projects that are already on the books. And see whether those could be used as mitigation.
Okay. So I think if I understand your answer to my question, it's, yeah, well, sort of.
No, it's all three of them do need it.
All three of them do need the tunnel. Okay, I did not understand, I didn't, I didn't understand that before, so I learned something tonight. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yeah, I'm going to reserve my questions about the specific ones for another time, but thanks for that. I want to talk a little bit about slide 23 in your presentation, which is not Caltrain's criteria, but the council criteria from three and a half years ago. I think we've, we've all learned some things and I bet you all have learned more. And I see you think that these criteria should be updated and perhaps reconciled. So could the two of you just share with us what you think needs to be updated and where there are conflicts? So as, as we think about how we're going to make this decision, we can use them or modify them as needed.
I can start, Larry, and if you have anything to add. At a high level, the main gist of the comprehensive plan is that in order to reduce our dependence on single occupancy vehicles. That we're going to do everything we can to really strengthen our bike and pedestrian network. And so there's a difference between the east-west connectivity for bikes and cars, or bikes and peds, and the difference between that with cars. And so your, there are things in the comprehensive plan that seem to conflict. On the one hand, it says keep open as many east-west crossings as you can for all modes. In other parts, we say bikes and peds are more important. And so that's a sort of a natural tension that has existed. There's a lot of stuff in the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of, I think, opportunities to think about what other projects could be, could help. Doing grade separation projects as an example, you know, could you underground utilities near there? I think there's ways to work through other things that are in the comprehensive plan, but it would be worth. Policymakers and staff really culling through those and figuring out what other things, you know, might there be some nexus between what we're doing with grade separations and the policies? Outside of that, XCAP didn't officially have any very specific suggestions because we thought it was frankly, a pretty big policy thing that we shouldn't get into as, as lowly citizens.
Nothing then.
Or nothing to add? Okay. All right, so I know we're not making comments, but I, my prior comments on the criteria, I think will continue to stand.
I think you can start to make some comments if you have some.
I, you know, I've just, I've been concerned about these, the whole tier one, tier two. The idea that the eminent domain concern was about cost and not about. You know, the impact. And, and I think we have yet to be disciplined about the order in which we think about them. And, you know, I recall Mayor DeBois, when you and I were, you know, when we were still back in chambers, trying to work with earlier members of the XCAP to figure out, how can we reorder these? So I think it's worth us as council thinking about doing what the XCAP did, which is say, listen, you know, cost is, is absolutely. A primary driver and, and let's start, let's start with that as long as these other alternatives meet there. So I'll just throw that out as we think about how we're going to make the decision. I guess the next question would be for staff. Sure.
But because I think there's been some confusion on eminent domain, I think XPACK was pretty clear that. That we didn't rule it out. We just thought it was a factor, that we didn't want to see lots of property takings. Not so much because of the, obviously it's a cost factor, but because of its impact on the community. But over and over again, we had, we all made little speeches to the, because we had members of the community say that they thought that the city council had ruled out eminent domain. We would say, no, not desirable, while certainly limited, but it was appropriate that we could certainly live with having an eminent domain as part of a particular alternative.
You know, I might take that opening, I believe our AECOM team could provide a little more clarity on the Churchill. Hybrid option, the two hybrid options and the eminent, not eminent domain, the property acquisition impacts associated with that. Could I ask someone to just remind us, since they were involved with that work?
Yeah, I think we can summarize that the, the hybrid, the Churchill hybrid had 14 residential properties with significant impacts. And eight driveway modifications that were required. We also looked at a reverse hybrid, which had 43 residential properties with significant impacts and three residential driveways. So that was presented back to council and then dropped as an alternative in June 2018.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Lexington.
And I just want to make one clarification too, from the earlier conversation about. Closers, closures required at Churchill, I just wanted to be clear for. During construction, we would not need to close Churchill during construction of the. Pedestrian undercrossing for any significant length of time and similar for the viaduct. That would be the case with the partial underpass, that it would require closure of Churchill for it to be constructed. And that's in our evaluation matrix.
Is that, is that Milet with both for option one and option two of the bike ped options for Churchill?
Yes.
And my time is up.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start with focusing on the, on the traffic study. I have a couple of questions on that. To be clear, so does level of service only apply to motor vehicle use? Or does it also consider pedestrians, bicycles, public transportation, urgency vehicles, et cetera?
I guess, this is Gary Black with Hexagon, I guess I'll jump in and answer that. Level of service is typically applied to motor vehicles and that's what you see in the traffic study. There are also other measures that you can look at for the quality of service for pedestrians, bicycles and transit. So that that could be looked at, but in the studies that have been done so far, it's looking at motor vehicles.
Okay, so thank you, thank you, Gary. I'm good to bring you on here. So the, so the, the studies that have been done so far, we only have a sense of the impacts on motor vehicles, nothing else.
Well, from a quantitative standpoint, yes.
Okay.
There's a qualitative analysis of impacts to bicycles and pedestrians. That, that is discussed in the traffic studies and. There's, for example. At, at Embarcadero and Alma, you know, the design shows how bicycles would be handled going through there. There are counts in the study of the number of pedestrians or bicycles that are using Churchill and that are using Embarcadero. So you can kind of get a sense of, of, you know, how much, how popular those are. And there's discussion about the fact that. With the closure of Churchill, even though that would cause more traffic to be at Embarcadero. It would also provide or could provide an underpass there for bikes and pedestrians that would be completely separated from traffic. So it would kind of be giving on, you know, taking away on one hand and giving on the other hand. And that, you know, that qualitative discussion is in there.
All right, thanks, Gary. And while I have you on here, a couple more questions. Why, why is the, why did this traffic study only study up to the year 2030? When I understand like the typical standard is for these traffic studies to look out 20, 25 years into the, into the future.
Well, that could just be the way it's named. It's general plan buildout and Palo Alto has assigned a year of 2030. So that's what they call their general plan buildout 2030. So. It could potentially come into play if you're talking about land use changes in other communities other than Palo Alto. And we could, for example, look at a scenario of 2040 where we would look at other land use for, say. Mountain View or Menlo Park, but for Palo Alto, we only have 20, we only have the general plan buildout.
Okay, that, that, that makes sense, but definitely a, and not, not your fault, but definitely a kind of a glaring, I guess. Yeah, inadequacy, at least for us moving forward and trying to better understand the implications that our decisions are going to have when. Seems like these, these grade separations are not going to be complete until close to that year. And of course, these are hundred year projects, so just definitely a concern I'll have moving forward. One final question, Gary. I understand that originally it was, I think XCAP and Nadia, you can correct me if I'm wrong, recommended. Eight intersections be studied for the traffic study, but, but only six were. Can you explain why that is?
Well, I think those numbers of eight and six, where those come from is that there was an original traffic study done before we came on board. That identified impacts at eight intersections. But we disagreed, we Hexagon disagreed with that analysis and our analysis in our, it's our belief that there would be impacts at six intersections. That the other, the other intersections in question that were dropped out were on Middlefield. And we didn't think the impacts would extend that far away from the grade separations.
Okay, thank, thank you. Just I guess a few, it's a moment's at a time, just kind of a few comments on, on this, I think. I think the, I think the dissenters in, in XCAP as well as some several community members have made very, I think, very strong arguments for the concerns of. Not having enough, not, not having enough information on the impacts of, of traffic, especially as a, as a kind of a network within Palo Alto. And I'm really concerned about, about us redirecting traffic to, to other areas in Palo Alto, especially streets like, like Lincoln and other residential streets in that. In that region and just the ripple effects that it will, that it will cause, but I see my time is up.
Vice Mayor Burt?
Yeah, first following on to Councilmember Stone's questions about the traffic study. So I appreciate that the time horizon for the study is aligned with our general plan. But this project isn't aligned with the time horizon of the general plan. The time horizon of the project is. To contend with traffic impacts that go beyond that, that would be growing beyond that period. For example, Stanford's general use permit is a 20-year time horizon, it's on hold right now, but. That's, that's the horizon for that. The ultimate Caltrain buildout of their train capacity is well beyond that period. And, and that increased train service is based upon an anticipation of a regional growth. That would drive additional demand for those trains. So I see a real fundamental disconnect between. The horizon that we use for the traffic study and, and what we need. So that when we specifically, when we look at whether Embarcadero can accommodate with mitigations, can accommodate. Taking the 10,000 cars that are currently on Churchill and moving them to Embarcadero and Oregon principally. And whether, first a question, whether that really can be done feasibly. But then second, what about the additional cars beyond 2030? And we don't seem to have studied that in any way, and yet we're deciding that we can close. A major grade crossing. And that goes into the other issue that Councilmember Cormac had raised about the criteria. And, and. Larry had alluded to that, I think it was Larry, that alluded to the, some of the. Elements of the comp plan and the criteria that shed light on this and our. elements of the comp plan and the criteria that shed light on this and are appropriate to use when we evaluate this project and these alternatives. I think Larry had indicated that while they're kind of conflicting different aspirations. Well, to the degree that is the case, that's the very thing that we and the staff and the XCAP should be struggling with. And, and the fact that there are tensions between some of those objectives doesn't mean we just can either disregard them or choose which ones we abide by. It means we have to actually struggle and say, okay, how do we reconcile these things with a given alternative? Or how do the different alternatives weigh against those competing criteria? Although I think Nadia had mentioned correctly that I believe that the, the comp plan alludes to retaining all of the permeability and, and basically the, the, the traffic capability for vehicles. And then elsewhere talked about expanding it for bikes and pedestrians. Well, my recollection is that is actually the intention of the comp plan, that we are maintaining our full permeability for vehicles. And that we actually are expanding it over time for bikes and pedestrians. And those two things we should have, be bearing in mind. I'm very concerned that a closure of Churchill diminishes it for the vehicles. I think there are opportunities to expand it as the XCAP has identified for bikes and pedestrians. Although I think we still need to look harder at South Palo Alto, south of Loma Verde, to have a, a separate bike and pedestrian crossing there. And let's see, oh, just another comment on the design exceptions. Philip had spoken about us needing to submit for exceptions. And they, Caltrain would study them and, and give us an answer and, and give us a bill. But that was really the principal approach before the, the rail corridor study. Where my understanding is that within that, we could have not exceptions, but new standards. And new standards would apply to all the grade crossing crossings that exist on the peninsula, 41 that remain in whichever cities would apply to that. So for instance, the issue of a, the vertical grade or the vertical radius, which are both determinative of how sharply you can go down or go up, affect all kinds of cities up and down the corridor. And I fully expect that that's what we're going to want to be engaging with Caltrain the most on is design standards as opposed to design exceptions and that, that they've shifted that. So I think that's something to very much bear in mind. I also want to just say, I appreciate that the city manager had really made the distinction between reference to eminent domain and property acquisition. Because in most circumstances, when we come up for a need for a public agency to obtain properties, eminent domain is not the method that, that is used. It's kind of a last resort. And there, we're typically able to have negotiated agreements. And that creates better opportunities and fewer of the, if, if they're done discriminate, with real discrimination on where we use it, like Larry had clarified that we're, we want to really minimize that. And we do it through property acquisitions. That's a different framework from a heavy handedness of massive eminent domain. So I just wanted to get those elements in folks' minds as we're considering these things. Thanks.
Councilmember Tanaka.
I was wondering if staff can talk a little bit about Caltrain finances. You know, I know that they, because of the ridership being down big time, that there's a lot of financial trouble that they have, they're having. And I'm just wondering, like, how much of their plans are really on track given the economic situation? Can someone on staff talk about that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to take a stab at it, although I'm guessing Nadia has a lot of information about this as well. But, you know, as, as everyone's probably aware, public transit has been hit very hard by the pandemic and lowered ridership. So just, you know, noting that that's, that's affected everyone, although there has been some federal influx of federal dollars that have supported the transit agencies and the latest stimulus has a significant amount of money in it for transit agencies as well. So I, unfortunately, I don't, I don't know how much I can speak to the fact that, you know, Caltrain was hurting. But noting that throughout this pandemic, the Caltrain station with the highest usage has been in Palo Alto still. So there's still continued ridership and I expect that over the next coming months, that it's going to continue to accelerate the return and also finally noting that Caltrain received passage of Measure RR, which will also continue to support them financially. So they're less dependent on just fares and, and every jurisdiction support now, because they actually have their own sales tax measure.
So is, is there plans to have no more trains or whatnot still on track, given their time frame? Or is there a delay at all? Do you have any idea?
I haven't heard anything about it being delayed at this time. So I, I believe that they are still somewhat on track. And in fact, some of the work for electrification has actually been sped up a little bit by the fact that they've had a lot more time or freedom in the roads to close and all that to continue their electrification work. But I haven't heard anything that suggests that they're way off track on any of this. That doesn't mean that some of the financial stuff might slow them at any time.
I wanted to kind of explore to, you know, to extreme here. So what if we, I like to just kind of hear. Can you guys hear me?
You froze for.
Okay. Um, yeah. So I was wanting to, if I could get you to step for XCAP's perspective on kind of the drawbacks of what if we just do the wait and see on Churchill? So rather than, you know, doing closure or separation, just do kind of a wait and see on that one. What's, what's the, what's the drawback of doing that versus trying to go forward with it? When we do the others?
Larry, I'll let you take it.
Well, well, Nadia?
Yeah, you can take it.
Right off the top, I think there are two drawbacks to it. One is that you may miss out on federal infrastructure funds. If you, the second is that if you wait until the problem arises, you're going to have at least five years, probably more of big problems. If you don't start the process early enough and you have the problems and you, and you, and you are where you are today. The, whatever the project is that you choose isn't going to be done for several years thereafter. So you're, you're, you're buying yourself into a situation where if you delay, you're going to have X number of years, probably at least five, maybe, maybe more by delaying.
Okay.
Another one is you probably, I would put this third frankly, but, but it is a factor that you're going to probably lose out on some of the Measure B funds.
Well, and I would just add to what Larry's saying. I mean, XCAP has highlighted for you that you have some pretty critical, perhaps discussions that may jump to the front of the line, specifically Palo Alto Avenue, because of what's happening at the redesign of the San Francisco Creek Bridge. And because XCAP, we weren't allowed to talk about Palo Alto Avenue, but certainly we shared many times, first of all, that that was very frustrating. And second, that if there were significant changes at Palo Alto Avenue or even at Embarcadero, that that could actually really change what happens at Churchill. So at a minimum, you should go forward with studying what else is happening further north, because that might help inform it. And in the meantime, as Larry pointed out previously, the mitigation measures that have been highlighted for an eventual closure are all projects that if you just did them, regardless of the grade separation, you'd be leaving Palo Alto in a better place.
Agreed.
I have more questions later.
Um, so I want to jump in. I just want to make sure, maybe I misheard. Were, did you say some of your recommendations of things that we could look at next? Or things that we may want to jump ahead and, but they would normally be paid for by Caltrain?
Yeah, specifically what we, what we looked at was, it's not so much that they would be paid for by Caltrain. But if you look at the graphic that the staff report has, that we also put into our presentation, you can see that normally you secure funding and then you'd maybe select your, your preferred project alternative. And then you would do things like geotechnical. And what we're proposing is there's some stuff that you might need to do to actually be able to winnow down the alternatives. If it comes back after geotechnical study, that the trend would be.
I understand that. I, I thought I heard you say that Caltrain would normally pay for that and you were suggesting we pay for it.
No. And I, I would say that, you know, the, 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 how Caltrain has done things previously and how they need to do things in the future is really changing, right? And so, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to say. And frankly, we, we did reach a point at the beginning of XCAP's process, but before COVID, where we were going somewhat faster than what Caltrain was ready for. They were hoping to do the grade corridor study and they made it clear to us, like, if, look, if you come at us now, you have to front load paying for the, some of this analysis, because we don't even have the experts. They, we Caltrain don't even have the experts on board to be able to answer the grade and the curve and all these kinds of things, right? At the time, that was the.
So I, I mean, we did ask XCAP not to focus on funding, but, and again, it was kind of asked before, but I just really want to understand how much of the decision to close Churchill was driven by cost? I mean, it seemed to be like the number one reason.
I think for the majority it was. Larry, do you want to speak to them?
Well, I think it varies by, by individual. It's a, how much, how much emphasis does, does a person place on cost versus aesthetics? Safety. It's a very difficult decision. And even if you said, even if you assign points to it, it still works out the same way. People have their individual choices. So some members, it might have been maybe the deciding factor, for others, it may have been just an add-on. So it's really hard.
I mean, it's a little facetious, but isn't the cheapest solution just to close all the crossings? Yeah.
You wouldn't be able to get across Palo Alto, certainly not South Palo Alto particularly.
Yeah, I'm just saying, well, we got San Antonio and Oregon and Embarcadero. And I, I want to go back to the bike crossing at Kellogg. I don't know the back of Paly that well. I mean, is the possibility here to, you know, talk to PAUSD about a new entrance to the high school? I mean, would there be a way to actually just have that tunnel go right into campus? Or be able to, you know, get on the campus?
I, yeah, go ahead, Philip.
Yeah, I would just, I, I think it would be more likely to connect to the bike path.
Right. I'm saying that, that wall there where the bike path is.
Oh, could you?
I don't know if there's a gap in the building, kind of like Pamp, right? There's a tunnel that goes, connects to the bike path, but also goes to the facility.
But you have the field there. It comes up basically, if you kept going past the bike path, you run into the field.
That's the back of the, of the stands, basically.
Yeah, yeah. In that corner, the athletic corner.
Okay. Um, so I, I, again, I, I am really thankful for the work you guys did. I, I am concerned, and I've said it, I think almost every rail meeting, about the sheer amount of time we spend on Churchill and the amount of time we don't spend on Meadow and Charleston. You know, some of the discussion here tonight, I do remember we did vote, the initial vote to close Churchill was, I think in August or September of 2018, it was right in the middle of an election. I'm not sure it was the best time to vote. I think people were extremely sensitive to voter reaction. You know, looking at our council criteria, we, you know, we did that recently carefully. I think it holds up pretty well. I mean, it's multifaceted. We said, you know, we wanted safe bike and pet crossings. We want to reduce automobile delay and congestion. And we want to facilitate movement for all modes of transportation. You know, that all holds up. And I think, you know, Vice Mayor Burt really summed it pretty well, that I think, I think maybe there's a little bit of error interpretation of, of the comp plan goal one. You know, we're not, we haven't said that we're trying to reduce SOV traffic by closing roadways or removing roadways. You know, I think that was going a bit further than intended. We, we have been talking about improving our, our bike paths and our bike plans. So I think, you know, as council tonight, we should decide kind of how much longer we want to go, where we want to get to. You know, in the next meeting, I definitely would like to really understand the Churchill underpass option and challenges in really more detail and, and some of the points that were brought up tonight of, you know, you know, have we kind of looked at all the assumptions and the turn radiuses and things? And, you know, I don't, I don't really know what the challenges are. And I'd really like to get, you know, a lot more detailed on what it's going to take to get to a preferred design for Charleston and Meadow. You know, the roundabout is interesting in that it removes stoplights and, and, you know, the flow there for, for both cars and bikes and pets looks pretty interesting. So anyways, that, that's where I am. So so I don't know. I mean, how does, how does council feel? Should we do like another one more round of comments and then stop there for the night? Anybody have a comment?
I, I, I just wanted to say that for XCAP's second part of the presentation, we plan to go deep on all the alternatives. As you probably have seen in the report, if you were able to read it fully already, we have pages and pages and pages where we literally go through technical improvements to every single one of the alternatives and try to highlight for you as much as we can, some of the pros and cons, but we can certainly go deeper on that. Also, for the next meeting, we plan on having Keith Rektall and Phil Burton talk to you about some of the technical things and how those technical assumptions will change, could change the overall footprint of these things. And we'll have Greg Braille also kind of summarize some of the South Palo Alto things as well. So stay tuned. We didn't want to overwhelm you on night one, but this, this one had about 38 slides. I think we have 55 slides, not for the next presentation, not counting what you just asked for, which is about more detail on the partial underpass, which we can certainly provide. So I would just say, it might be, if I could make a recommendation to council, I would recommend that we have another study session, because I just, having this sandwiched in a regular council meeting for you guys is probably going to be more than you'd want in one night. But that's just my suggestion. Larry, you've been on council. Your thoughts?
I'd agree.
And again, to like council members, if you could give me some reaction, I mean, do you guys think one more round tonight is sufficient? No head shakes, yes or no, either way? All right. Okay. I'm going to suggest we do one final round. And so why don't we go ahead and, and start? Councilmember Filso.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, if we, if we do another session, you know, I'm a lot more interested in Charleston Meadow than, than Churchill. I think, you know, given all the parameters and so forth, you know, with the least urgency to do something like Churchill, it's the lowest traffic. You know, who, who knows how long it's going to take Caltrain to reach, you know, high level capacity? I mean, they might do it, they might not do it. You know, who knows what's going to happen with it? There's just so much uncertainty, right? But, you know, the, the, the need is so much higher at Charleston and Meadow, just because so, so much traffic on Charleston, right? You know, I, 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 I'd like to spend a lot more effort there than, than thrashing through the, the Churchill thing, which just hasn't seemed as urgent to me. Thanks.
That was fast. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor DeBois. I guess I'm, I'll view this more as sort of like summation. I guess I do have one, one question potentially for staff. You know, we had thought about doing a downtown coordinated area plan, and of course it went, went by the wayside with COVID. What are staff's thoughts about how we should approach the Palo Alto Avenue crossing as we go forward? Because we sort of put it aside, but any thoughts that you can share with us that we can incorporate?
Perhaps I could speak to the downtown work and then I'll ask Mr. Kami to speak to the connection to San Francisco Creek Bridge. So the scope of work for starting that downtown, I think we called it access study or something to that effect, is, is still pending. And as Councilmember Cormac, you pointed out, COVID certainly interfered with it. The biggest issue is, I think, really an expectation of bandwidth for the work that we'll be involved in, in taking that on, recognizing the number of interests, stakeholders and issues that will come into play there. recognizing the number of interests, stakeholders and issues that will come into play, uh, there. Uh, but I would just note that it is still pending and in fact, we'll probably put in, uh, for a federal earmark, uh, as we have been shopping that project, uh, at a few stops, uh, for the purpose of just getting some more additional dollars, uh, to get that underway. So with that, Mr. Cami could provide an update on the conversations with Caltrain on San Francisco Kito Creek.
Yeah, so the San Francisco Kito Creek, and as you're probably aware, that, that bridge is, um, approximately 100 years old. So it is, um, you know, nearing the end of its useful life. So that's, that's really the impetus that, um, Caltrain has to, um, get it replaced. But just noting that they're currently in the very early, um, planning phase. They, um, for assessment and outreach of the, um, the project, they've got, I think, $62,000 budgeted, um, for that. And I think they've just, um, selected a, a consultant for that. And, um, they just told us in the past, past couple of days here that they'd like to, um, meet with us to have some early discussions about that, um, in, uh, April.
Great. Okay. Um, I just do think we have to figure out how to incorporate that back into our thinking. Um, I was a proponent at the time of us not separating Churchill and Palo Alto Avenue because I thought there could be some connections and, and I think XCAPS experience has, you know, shown us that there, there can be. So, um, that's just a big question mark for us to think about how to incorporate that going forward. Um, other questions, um, perhaps, um, perhaps staff can remind me and, and my colleagues and the, and the public. Was XCAP designed to be representative of the neighborhoods or, or not? I don't, I don't recall that.
This goes all the way back, uh, to the CAP. And so I think at, at that point in time, it was intended to be a coalition of the willing that were interested in, in participating. And, um, again, as was noted earlier, this is something actually dates back to both, uh, Jim Keen and Rob DeGhost, who worked, uh, specifically to, to, uh, pull together the interested parties, uh, to participate in that. Then, uh, the, as the, um, uh, council set a more, uh, specific role for the XCAP and quite frankly, a larger role for the XCAP to take on that work. We added some specific, uh, interest stakeholder groups and, uh, did not reopen the composition for the group as a whole, as, as I recall. Uh, and I, I may be a little fuzzy on that, but, uh, I believe that was the general gist.
Yeah, that's, that's consistent with my memory. Ms. Nyack, did you want to weigh in?
I, I was just going to agree. I think we had nine original members of the CAP that continued on. And then the remaining positions were filled by, uh, City Manager Chikata, uh, with an eye towards trying to round it out with folks from the business community, the school community, friends of Caltrain. Larry Klein is a former mayor, former elected, um, and Keith Rekdahl, who's on Parks and Recs, but also lives in the Charleston Meadows neighborhood, because more of the folks from the Charleston Meadows neighborhood had dropped off.
Yeah, I recall us losing at least three. Okay. Um, I just think it's, it's helpful, um, just to, um, I certainly heard what some of the public speakers said, but I just think we, I don't think it was designed at that point to be, um, representative. It was designed to help us figure out, you know, how to make this decision. And my time is up. So I guess just the last thing, um, I want to say is I just want to echo the, um, the public speaker who described the XCAPS work as meticulous analysis and probing questions. And we've certainly seen evidence of that today, and I know it's going to take us a little while. I, I doubt we're going to get up to speed with you, but, um, uh, again, just a deep appreciation.
Um, Vice Mayor Burt.
Thank you. Um, so one quick question, uh, down in that I alluded earlier to the, the need for, uh, long-term and perhaps connected with this, um, grade separation program, uh, to have, uh, a bike ped crossing uh, in South Palo Alto, south of the future Loma Verde one, uh, that would be separate from, uh, the vehicular crossing. So if, if we're having construction on East Meadow and Charleston, uh, and, uh, we eliminate, uh, we have a closure of roadways during construction, which is, I think, an underappreciated impact from multi-year closure potentially of Charleston and East Meadow. And how we mitigate that is going to be, I think, an important discussion in our next meeting. But part of that is how do we have all those literally, uh, many hundreds of approaching maybe a thousand or more school kids who are crossing at those locations? Where do they go? Uh, those in, in kind of the northern part of South Palo Alto could take the new Loma Verde route, but it would be very circuitous for those down East Meadow and, and south of there to go north, uh, by a mile or two and then have to go south again. And so that's something I think we should really look at, not to mention that North Palo Alto, even though we need to improve bike and ped crossings, has more today by far than South Palo Alto because South Palo Alto has none. Uh, so I think that's been underappreciated. And one of the things that hasn't been really looked at is property acquisition for the purpose of facilitating a bike ped crossing. And it wouldn't take the, uh, a large amount of property acquisition, but there just aren't many locations that we could have landings uh, on either side of Alma, uh, or Alma or the other side of tracks, Air Park, for the, the landing of, of a bike ped, uh, dedicated crossing. So we need, I think we need to get that on the table. And then, um, there is also another group that I don't think, unless I missed it, we, I, Nadia, I'm not sure if we, do we fully acknowledge the advisory group of the, uh, volunteer civil engineers? They get.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, the, the XCAP report has everybody's names, but yes, we had, we had four, uh, retired civil engineers who helped us sort of pre-vet the, um, the community generated alternatives before they went to AECOM. And so they were also.
So that saved us a ton of money because it flushed out and we didn't give AECOM something that was not baked at all. We gave them something that was a quarter baked or half baked. And that, that saves a lot of money and a lot of the problem with that process is if we give, uh, a consulting group, whoever it is, uh, a, a new idea, um, they're going to come back with an expensive, um, to generate response that may not have been kind of had the iterative process that it, it needed to have. And so that was really valuable. I will say too, that, uh, the mayor was asking about the possibility of a bike ped crossing, uh, near Kellogg. And I actually think there may be space, uh, to be able to, uh, do that with a landing spot, uh, without interfering with a football field and some underutilized land with, um, just a little sliver at, at Paly. Perhaps that would take some, uh, design work and some negotiation, but I don't think we should, uh, uh, remove it from considerations. And, um, let's see. I think that covers kind of, oh, my last thing, uh, there was a mention on the, uh, partial underpass at Churchill. And, um, uh, kind of in response to the, uh, 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 Mr. Price, who had, had, uh, uh, co-authored the, uh, concept, uh, uh, suggesting that, that there were potentials to kind of refine that and, and narrow the amount of the width of it and some of the design elements of it. And then one of the responses was, well, we have to accommodate fire trucks, for instance. But, uh, we get no fire trucks there if we close it. So we'd be forcing fire trucks to go to Embarcadero in Oregon if we close it. Uh, and so I'm not quite sure about that, the consistency of that rationale. Uh, Philip, looks like you want to chime in there.
Yeah, just to say that we have to accommodate safety vehicles in a location where we would have vehicles driving. So if we had an accident that occurred there, we would need to be able to accommodate safety vehicles. It's not, it's not for the throughput. Um, that's a whole, that's an entirely different issue, which deals with, um, the responsive, um, response time for emergency.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you. Uh, I will add that, um, uh, we, we had a, a, some response from our fire department about, uh, the closure potential there and the impact on, um, on, uh, emergency vehicle response. I think we need to really relook at the ramifications of that, uh, because that does matter, uh, to them. And I, it's hard for me to imagine that you close off one of those routes and it doesn't have a, uh, an impact on emergency police and fire response, uh, availability. So those are my last comments for tonight. Thank you all, uh, from, uh, everybody involved with the XCAP and, and, um, and the public who has really played a valuable role and will continue to do so in this.
So Councilmember Ku, you had your hand up. Did you not want to talk?
Um, well, since you called me, I'll take the opportunity. Thank you. I was not going to say anything, but then the thing is, I think it really bothers me that, um, I just realized after what Councilmember Cormac had clarified that the communication and correspondence of what, what the XCAP was, was discussing was not taken to the public. And that really, um, that really is concerning to me because I think that not everybody will know. So in, in some sense, what they were commenting about is actually true that they weren't involved in a lot of these kind of decisions. It's only those who were following and not everybody can follow, um, the count, the meetings that XCAP is having. So I would say, you know, um, one of the things that we really have to consider is what is the, uh, outreach to the, to, to the members of the community? So that they're fully involved with, um, with what is being discussed at the XCAP and, and, and not have to come and tell, you know, line up and kind of let council know that they really haven't been represented. So I just want to put it that point out. Like I said, I wasn't going to say it, but it was just not sitting well with me. Thanks.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two quick questions on, on funding, um, then I'll do my final comments. Nadia, you said earlier that if four, if four tracks are required, then the grade separation is mandatory under federal, if, if there's four tracks, then grade separation is mandatory under, under the federal law. And Caltrain's taking the position that high-speed rail should fund them. So is that saying that Caltrain's taking the position that high-speed rail must fund those grade separations on behalf of the cities? Or simply that high-speed rail would have to pay for the cost, would just have to pay for the cost of the additional tracks?
I would say it's murky at best. I don't think that they've figured that out. But, um, but it is true that basically it's a safety regulation that when you're, when a car can't travel over four tracks, at that point you have to have a grade separation.
And yeah, it just seems, this is what makes I think this whole process so complex and frustrating is there's all these moving pieces and uncertainties and not being able to understand quite the funding and the funding sources. I, I don't know how we can make a deci- a decision based, based on, on cost and price when we don't even know whether, with a, what type of funding that we're going to have available to us. So it's a.
Well, I can give you, so a couple of things as, um, there was some references made to the appendix. I would say, um, the appendix is quite enormous. And if you're interested, there is a document in the appendix called the History of, of Grade Separation Funding. So while XCAP didn't vote on anything related to funding, I actually took the time to kind of research how were these things funded previously and how do they get funded? And I mean, generally the history of the entire corridor on the peninsula has been that for the most part, um, the grade separations that have been built were really for traffic mitigations, not necessarily for the train. And so you'd have each county would raise their version of a measure B. You say Mateo County had measure A, and they would have the cities essentially fight each other for their next transit project. And whoever got it, you know, gets it and whoever can get their project completed first. That's how it went. It was kind of barbaric. Um, but now you've got this, this complete dynamic, which is you now have with the electrification of Caltrain, the ability to have a faster schedule, which is really going to help relieve traffic, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. You know, if you are following the housing conversation, they want to build housing where there's more transit. So it sort of feeds on itself. And there's a, something that changed within environmental law that says that previously if, uh, trains going by made cars wait, folks could sue under SECO to say, well, now you're causing cars to idle and therefore you shouldn't be able to do a, a train crossing, or you shouldn't be able to run so many trains. They, the state has chosen to flip that because they really want to encourage public transit. So what that means effectively is Caltrain, from their perspective, can continue to run as many trains as they want. And if peninsula cities get gridlocked, too bad. Now, of course, there's political ramifications, right? The, the Board of the JPB or the Joint Powers Board that runs Caltrain has three members of each of the counties. They probably don't want that. None of us want that. It's frankly why measure B passed because we could see that that was coming and we thought we better fix something. But I will say that my, and this is just my, my personal opinion, not XCAPS. Um, the way we've done it is not going to be able to be the way that we do it going forward. We are going to have to unify and part of Caltrain's corridor study is they have to think about how do you put these projects together, not just from a geographic perspective, but from an operational perspective, from, uh, you know, what, what things are physically close enough to be able to warrant a project? And frankly, in order to get the big bucks, you need big numbers. And so they might take, for example, five or 10 grade separations at once, package them together and try to get the feds to fund that. Um, uh, one other thing, and then I'll let, I see your hand, Philip. I, I would also like to say that the, the, uh, we're talking about federal funds and we may not be ready because our projects are not ripe. But the replacement of the San Francisco Kito Creek Bridge, which is 118 years old, falls very squarely in the stuff that probably could be ripe for a Biden infrastructure plan. And so I would just reiterate once again that that may front load this conversation in a way that none of us were really prepared for. And we may have to pivot in a way that, you know, we didn't consider. And so I think the funding, you know, funding things will change over time, but that one in particular may get there first before anybody. And I think we ought to pay significant attention to it.
Yeah, just to tag along to, to what Nadia said, um, one of the things that I think is important for consideration is I don't think from Caltrain's perspective, it matters if the ridership comes back right away. I think, um, the, actually, if the ridership does not come back, that's actually more of a driving factor for, um, faster frequency, uh, more frequent trains, because the reality is the more frequent your train comes or the more, you know, options you have for trips, the more appealing transit is. And that's just a standard factor in transit is that the more often a train comes, the more frequently it comes, the more attractive it is. And so the more likely they're going to be, um, inspiring ridership, e- even if they're down ridership. So I'm just noting that the number of passengers doesn't necessarily impact whether they have that higher frequency train.
And I would piggyback one more thing, which is that, um, on the list of the infrastructure projects that California is looking at is the extension of, uh, Caltrain from Fourth and King down to the DTX tunnel. And I, I will just say that, um, my colleague and I, uh, uh, card with Elizabeth Alexis. Elizabeth has done a lot of studies about ridership. And the biggest thing that would fundamentally change the ridership on Caltrain is being able to get into San Francisco's financial district. And so if that project were to get front loaded again, because they have more shovel-ready plans, it's an expensive project. I think it's, the last time I looked at it was 1.6 billion. But if that thing got front loaded, boy, that would really amplify what Philip is referring to, which is the amount of service. Because now you really would be able to take even more cars off the 101 with really good service. And that, that just means that we shouldn't dither because it's going to, these are all going to take a while. If we can't build stuff until we do in mitigations and we got to start the study for mitigations, I mean, this is just a long process.
Great. Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you. That, just so encyclopedic on, on, on this topic. So I, I really appreciate it. And I know I'm, I'm out of time, so I will hold off any, any additional comments I have until our, our next meeting. But thanks again to the XCAP members for presenting and, and all the work that you've done.
I think she's, uh, Wikipedia, uh, just to be more modern, uh, Councilmember Tsnok.
Uh, so, you know, I, my last question was kind of exploring, you know, what if we did nothing on Churchill? I want to kind of go the extreme and see, um, so, you know, what if the federal government comes in and says, look, you know, we're going to print more money and, um, you know, we're going to pay for a, an end-to-end total, totally underground Caltrain tunnel. What would that, I, I guess, first of all, is that even, let's say the money wasn't a problem, just, you know, money was going to fall from the sky. What, what would that, what would, um, I, I guess I'll, I'll be interesting knowing kind of, um, perspective on that in terms of, what, what would that change? Because cost is not a problem, you know, it could be directly, because cost has been a big issue, right? Is this throwing the dollars, do something like this? What, what would, um, I, I guess, in our city, what would that look like? Yeah, please.
Um, well, so the. Well, so the original citywide tunnel, which was a misnomer, because as you recall, it was from within Palo Alto. So it started at the Palo Alto Avenue Station and went to the San Antonio border. That project alone had a lot of eminent domain. And I remember you, Councilmember Tsnok, were interested in the time, both at the tunnel.
Let me refrain phases, just to be clear. Let's say it's it was a system wide like tunnel, right? From all the urban areas, although it's kind of more destiny urban areas.
So I think.
Goes beyond Palo Alto.
Okay, even if it goes beyond Palo Alto, what I'll say is just to build it. So let's assume that, yes, it's going to be lovely and it's going to be end to end. Just to build it, you have a really significant amount of eminent domain that has to happen. And that was ju- just in Palo Alto, and that was just for a two track tunnel. Keeping in mind that in South Palo Alto, you may still need the potential of a four track tunnel with which there really is no space for. So that's setting that eminent domain aside. So if you're comfortable with taking a lot of homes in Palo Alto and having more than 10 years of construction, we'll move to the next phase. You have the issue of the station. So Palo Alto's University Avenue Station is close enough to San Francisco Kito Creek. That creek is over 40 feet deep. If you bury the train, you have to be able to get the passengers from the train down below 40 feet to be able to clear that creek all the way up to the surface. And there's this phenomenon in transit where riders really care if from the minute they step off the vehicle or the train, it takes them a very long time to get to the surface to where they need to go. So if they've got to go from mezzanine to mezzanine to escalator and you've got the stroller and you got to wait for the call button for the handicapped elevator, you've lost a significant amount of ridership. So that's just looking at the Palo Alto Avenue Station. Now, considering that you have 17 cities across the peninsula and the topography of the peninsula is not the same. So actually, if you look at the topography just of Palo Alto, University Avenue Station is actually, I think it's about 20 feet higher than what it is down by Meadow and Charleston. And that's just the variation in our borders. So this is a long way of telling you, it is an extremely complex engineering project that from a feasibility perspective, you're better off building the dumb Barton Rail Tunnel, the Second Transbay Tube, the extension to downtown. You know, any number of, you know, the Bart, finish the Bart project. There's so many other investments that will give you bigger bang for your buck, particularly on greenhouse gas emissions, particularly in getting people out of cars it today, that make way more sense than focusing any energy on those tunnels. That's just my take, not X caps.
I can, I think a more realistic approach to that kind of proposal would be if the federal government were to say, we're going to fund all of the Caltrain grade separations, which is is a lot more feasible than, I don't know, I can't even contemplate how much it would cost for them to do a Caltrain end to end tunnel.
And and I would agree in the businesses along the Caltrain right of way, within one mile of the Caltrain right of way are are the equivalent of 12% of California's GDP. So it's not just the state of California that cares, it is the federal government that cares. I mean, when Caltrain got the money for electrification, remember, they were the only project under the Trump administration that California received money for because it was so compelling to keep Silicon Valley online and figure out our transit problems that they've still got it under a very hostile administration. So I think that that's worth noting.
Thanks. And then first up, what is the plan to actually do surveys around this to get more, get a wider base of opinions on on the great separations?
Well, I I I think that kind of depends on where where we go next and, you know, how this project progresses. So I I think we're, you know, kind of pending input of of the council and potentially we could do another survey or do a citywide survey. Those are all options. I think it really depends on approach and, you know, what we're looking to do next. Certainly, that's one of the inputs that we were looking for is what kind of public outreach we should be looking at next.
Okay, great. So a lot of times, thanks again to X cap, the public, we appreciate guys work on this.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify, so for San Francisco Kito Creek, is the current bridge being removed?
They have to replace it. It's 118 years old. It has 100 year useful life. And so the real question is, when Palo Alto looked at what it might do, it looked at a hybrid alternative, which and actually what it would do is actually locate the bridge immediately adjacent to where it exists now and move it away from El Palo Alto.
Preserve it.
Right, so the real question is not preserve the bridge itself, build a new bridge, but basically you'd put it in the location of what would be your shoe fly tracks, right?
Correct, but also preserve the potentially preserve the old bridges as a historical bridge, just not the train.
That I didn't, I never heard anything about, but I I don't, I don't know. But but I will, I think it's it's notable for you guys that Menlo Park is has looked at Ravenswood for their Ravenswood, which is their first crossing over into Menlo Park. They looked at a hybrid. And then when the new council got voted in, I believe they added a viaduct alternative as well. And I, you know, I've fantasized about this often, maybe post COVID, it could be a reality. But I think it would be super useful for council members to be able to visit various sites to experience what it looks like to stand next to a hybrid or stand next to a viaduct or kind of see these things. And, you know, the most local thing that I can invite you to do is go over to El Palo Alto, which is a treasure. And, you know, the arborists can tell you, give you even a guided tour. But the difference of the street level of Alma on the Palo Alto side versus the Menlo Park side is super significant. So if you ever ride your bike over there, when you go over the San Francisco Kito Creek Bridge, you'll notice that the houses along Alma and Menlo Park actually face an elevated earthen berm, not unlike what the hybrid would be like. And I think.
I want to use up my minutes here, but thank you, Nadia. So a quick question, a discussion about the bike pass. I mean, was there any discussion about bike bridges versus tunnels? And again, I'm thinking about, you know, we actually have crime that occurs at university tunnels. And these would be fairly long tunnels. Was there any discussion about that at all?
We suggested a study. We did say that we thought that when you have an underpass where it's a clear shot and you could get people under Alma and the tracks, that that was really desirable. But all we said was that you've already got these things in the comp plan, you should study them.
And not a, did you talk about a bridge at all, bike bridge? Okay. So so again, just to wrap up, I'd really like to see us come up with a just a rail plan for council for the rest of the year. Like to see a series of meetings, definitely another steady session with the X cap. And then maybe we get to some action items on each crossing to see if we can, again, further reduce alternatives, identify next steps and really try to establish a timeline where we can. So again, thank, thank you to everybody. Thanks for all the good discussion tonight. I know the other X cap members have been here the entire time. I'd like to offer, if any of you guys would like to make a comment, again, maybe, maybe keep it short, maybe 60 seconds a person. Maybe you could just add a comment for some things that we should think about before the next meeting, if you'd like to. So if you could put your hand up, if you'd like to say anything. And they're all on there, but not listening. Let's say, Tony, hi, yes.
I I just wanted to appreciate Nadia's leadership and Larry's leadership. It was awesome and it was a real pleasure working on this committee, probably one of the best that I've ever worked on. But I also wanted to urge council to look at alternatives down the down the road that might mix and match, take some of the good from from the alternatives that looked at and eliminate some of the bad. And I think we need to to sort of look at, put that step in between in between where we are and choosing an alternative right away. I think there's a lot of data to learn from.
Great, thank you, Tony. Gregory. Think you're muted.
I'm sorry, I just had to plug in my camera. Thank you all for listening. I appreciate all the time. I'm going to, and I may do this a little bit after X cap is over, lobby you a little bit on rail safety. I was doing, there is a section in the chapter, it starts around 120 pages in about rail safety. We have some of the highest accident rates at grade crossings in the United States at Charleston Road, at Churchill in particular. We had a number of people, in fact, someone died at Churchill during the X cap process. And we've had a pretty high number of rail accidents, including some pretty scary ones that did not involve fatalities or injuries during this process. And I worry that when we talk about, can we just make a decision later? Can we just not do anything? I'm very concerned that safety is is at Churchill Avenue, at Charleston, at Meadow. We have 79 mile per hour trains going across grade crossings that have 12,000 vehicle crossings and hundreds and hundreds of bicycle crossings a day and almost nowhere else in the United States are there trains going that fast, passing that many cars and bicycles and God forbid, high school students. So I think we need to keep in mind that the longer we don't do anything about these great crossings, the more, the longer we are, we are rolling the dice, in my opinion, in having something terrible happen. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Carrie.
Hi, thank you so much for giving so much of your time to this incredible discussion. I think we we feel it. We've had a lot of long meetings on the X cap. And we're really glad to share this with you. So what I want to add was, there were a few questions about the Churchill closure and a few comments from the public as well. And I think it's really important that we read the recommendation as Churchill closure with mitigations. Under no circumstances should the closure be considered, you know, in isolation or or as closure only. The vote was specifically if mitigations can be provided, that make it workable. So there is a little bit more work to do on the the closure with mitigations recommendation. But just to make sure, I think some of the council members asked about that. So I just want to make sure that that you see it through that lens, that we want to address any any things that would make it not work.
Okay, thank you. And Keith.
Yeah, the one comment I would have is that, you know, we're in Silicon Valley here and none of the hardware or software that we make is perfect the first time. So that said, this is a 100 year project and we're, we have these alternatives that were put on paper as a first cut. And they're not perfect. Yet we're making decisions on them. So it's very difficult to understand, when do you say good enough? When do you say what we have is good enough to down select? And when do you iterate? And particularly on the new underpasses, I don't think we've iterated enough. So I think that at this point, in my, in my personal opinion, it's not a fair comparison and more work has to go under those.
Thank you. Phil.
Okay. I I don't have video, but that's, that's.
We can hear you.
Okay, so first I just want to thank Nadia and Larry. It was a pleasure working with them on X cap. It was very personally gratifying to be able to contribute to the group. Second, I want to underline my own personal sense of urgency about this issue. Now, urgency does not mean rush into a decision on Churchill, rush into the decision on the on Meadow and Charleston. What it does mean is that along with COVID, this is probably the most important issue facing the council this year. And the suggestion that you have periodic meetings that you put together action plans, those are all good ideas because we need to make forward progress. Because unless you've been through a massive construction project, which I personally been highways in this case, you may not appreciate how many moving parts there are and the amount of time it takes to get things done to the point where you you have a project finished. Thank you.
Thanks. And Dave.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thanks for sticking it out till 10 PM. And yeah, just echoing everybody, just want to say thanks to Larry and Nadia and also the rest of the X cap crew, both present and those who had to leave during the the middle of all the process. Yeah, really enjoyed the the time and learned a learned a lot. And I guess the one thing I wanted to add to to what everyone else has said is that it was really interesting in the discovery process of a lot of things that just simply should be done anyway, regardless of grade separation. So that would be like traffic light fixes at El Camino and and Oregon Expressway, at Town and Country and Barcadero. I mean, there's a, I think next week or something, there's going to be a meeting to to further discuss the bike head safety modifications that are going to be done pre-grade separation. So I mean, there's so many things that could be done to improve the city that, and some of those we've discovered through our process. And I'd urge you, city council, to really consider those and to do those as soon as possible to improve the safety of all these people who cross, all the kids who cross to the school every, every school day. So I'm hope you will take that in consideration.
Great, thank you. So thanks, thanks again to everybody in the X cap. Ed, did you have any final comments or?
I would just note that I think earlier we indicated we have a placeholder date that I'll just note that it is April 26, which is if everything stays according to schedule, would be the next opportunity for the council to have the follow up study session on this topic.
Great. So we have a little more time to finish reading this report. I'm going to read the history of train crossing funding. Particularly interested in the steam engine period. But thank you all, and that's meeting adjourned. Night.